All right, welcome to the regular session of the city council meeting of the city of Atascadero September 28th, and we will start with the pledge of allegiance, and I will ask Councilmember Darris to lead us in that pledge to the flag.
Okay, please join me, stand, and it looks like Susan has the flag for us, thank you, and begin, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark, roll call, please.
Councilmember Borbo.
Here.
Councilmember Darris.
Here.
Councilmember Funk.
Here.
Mayor Protim Newsom.
Here.
Mayor Moreno.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Well, if you were watching or listening to our city council meeting this evening, we welcome you. If you would like to speak during a time that is set aside for either community forum or any one of the public comment on any one of the topics that we have on our agenda this evening, you can do that here on the webinar, and so if you're with us on the webinar, you can simply press the raise hand button when I call for public comment, and if you are watching on channel 20, maybe you're listening on 1230 KPRL, then simply call 805-538-2888, and you can provide public comment via phone. When you do call, please let us know which topic you would like to speak on this evening, and once again, that number is 805-538-2888. May I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Funk, a second by Councilmember Darris, and we will waive the reading in full of all ordinances appearing on this agenda, and the titles of the ordinances will be read aloud by the city clerk at the first reading after the motion and before the city council votes, roll call, please.
Councilmember Funk?
Yes.
Councilmember Darris?
Yes.
Councilmember Borbo?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Newsom?
Yes.
Mayor Moreno?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And I will ask our city attorney, we had a closed session that we returned to at the end of our last regularly scheduled meeting of September 14th, and so I will ask our city attorney if there's anything to report from that closed session.
There was no reportable action.
Thank you, Mr. Parry. Onto our presentations, we have our employee recognitions this evening, and a little bit different, you know, in this world of COVID, we did a lovely presentation outside of City Hall last week, and I will bring on, is that our city manager who will be doing that?
We will just have Luke go ahead and show the video, so as you know, we videoed that, and he should be able to queue that up.
Wonderful.
So this is Bonnie Williams, she has been with the city, in her position for five years, she is an office assistant for the city manager office slash recreation slash CPC slash park reservation slash, does a lot of things. Bonnie originally began working for the city back in 2012 as a part-time assistant in the community services department when we were over at the Creekside Building. She worked part-time for several years and was then hired on a full-time basis five years ago as an office assistant for the recreation division at Colony Park Community Teen Center. Bonnie is the first person everyone usually sees at the front desk at the community center, assisting residents with their recreation class registrations and check-ins, city facility park, barbecue reservations, and more. No matter what they're there for, Bonnie always greets everyone with a wonderful smile and is a pleasure to work with. She assists our recreation supervisor at the Red Center, and she coordinates the city's new scholarship program. Bonnie also very capably assists Terry Vanish with all the city's popular events, including cruise night, dancing in the streets, winter wonderland, tamale festival, summer concert series, the Holiday Boutique, crowd fair, and so many more, so much more. In addition, she coordinates many other events that come to us from a wide variety of outside organization, and keeps an eagle eye and razor focus on all of the details to be sure that every event goes smoothly, whether it's a city-sponsored or organization event. So congratulations, Bonnie, on five years, and thank you, thank you for serving the community, we appreciate it. Just bump or whatever strikes your fancy. Laura, you're next. So this is Laura Christiansen, she is deputy city manager slash city clerk for the city, and we were very lucky to be able to lure Laura away from her prior position as an assistant city clerk in the city of Chino Hills five years ago, and I've been very grateful ever since that she decided to join us here in the Atascadero. Prior to serving as assistant city clerk, Laura also worked as a management analyst at Chino Hills, she has a law degree from Southern Methodist University, and is a certified municipal clerk. Her background, education, experience have been serving the city very well, and I can't say enough about the potentially tricky assignments and duties and projects that she's taken on and successfully run on my behalf. Laura gets all of those fun projects that come to the city manager's office such as trash, recycling, and cats, and animal services, so we often rely on Laura to deal with those things that are a little unwieldy. We also often rely on our expertise on in-house legal guidance and advice. Laura and her husband Pete, Pete's here with the two kids, have two small and very active children that keep them both quite busy, Violetta, Bee, hi Bee, and Sebastian, Baz, hey Baz, who are both just adorable little rugrats. Thank you, Laura, for all you've done as our deputy city manager and city clerk these past five years, I really appreciate all your help, I appreciate working with you, so thank you for your dedication and service to the community, appreciate it. Steve, you're next up. So this is Steve in Torota, he has been with the Charles Paddock Zoo for 10 years. Steve is a well-experienced, well-respected, essential member of our animal care staff at the Charles Paddock Zoo. He came to us with a wealth of knowledge from his work at the Horse Unit of the LA Police Department, and as a zookeeper at the Los Angeles Zoo. Steve's past knowledge and experience have proven to be valuable to us here at your zoo. He was originally hired as a zookeeper in 2011, and promoted to one of two lead zookeeper positions nearly four years ago, great, well-deserved promotion. Steve is also the zoo's registrar, and therefore responsible for maintaining records for the animal collection, he handles all of the zoo's animal transactions, so if you ever need to transport an antelope across the country, Steve knows how. He's an expert at that, so he has a terrific sense of humor, a wonderful ability to interact with our zoo visitors patiently and informatively, answering questions or explaining how we manage our animal collection, which often helps to enlighten the perspective on zoos in general and to improve their knowledge of the specific animals we have here at the Charles Paddock Zoo. He also has a sneaky smile, you don't get to see him very often, but when he comes out and is pretty, you know he did good, he's got a great sense of humor, and I enjoy working with Steve. So thank you, Steve, for your service, and I look forward to many more years of working with you, learning more about, more of you, about our animals and zoos, thank you, Steve. Yes, Steve, next. So this is Chris Robinson, and he's been with us full-time for 10 years, he is a fire captain and paramedic for the fire department. Chris previously worked with Cal Fire as a seasonal firefighter, and had already put himself through paramedic school. We were able to steal him away from Cal Fire and hired him as a full-time firefighter in August of 2011. Chris brought his invaluable wildland firefighting experience along with him, and he has been a very strong asset to the department ever since. He promoted to fire engineer, paramedic in 2015, and to fire captain, paramedic in 2018. Chris is instrumental in the department's emergency medical services program, EMS, he is a CPR instructor and a paramedic field training officer, responsible for training our new paramedics. Chris maintains all of our automatic external defibrillators, AEDs, throughout the city, he maintains the department EMS supplies, and ensures all EMS equipment is functioning and up to date. Off-duty, Chris keeps busy with home projects and four-wheeling in his Jeep whenever he can, which is probably not as often now as it used to be, as he and his wife Jamie are proud parents of their five-month-old daughter Amelia. So thank you for your service to our community, Chris.
I truly appreciate it, thank you.
Tom, you're next. So this is Tom Little, he has been with the fire department for 15 years as a full-time firefighter, or fire personnel, I guess you would end up. So we originally hired Tom as a reserve firefighter in 2000, then as a seasonal firefighter in 2002, he became a full-time firefighter with us in 2006, and promoted to fire engineer in 2011. Tom is a very busy and productive member of the department's grant writing team, which has submitted multiple grants over the years, and has helped the city successfully receive essential funding for essential items including new extrication equipment, personal protection equipment, and funding for the safer firefighter grant program, we have over 250,000 grants to be awarded. So Tom has been a member of the North County Technical Rescue Team since 2010, he is also qualified as a line MTA, and as an expanded dispatcher for the US Forest Service. Tom has his California State Fire Officer certification, and is currently working on his associate's degree. Tom and his wife Colleen just celebrated their 25th wedding anniversary, they have two children, a son Matthew and a daughter Marissa, and two grandchildren, and they're not busy with all of that and all your other firefighter duties, he enjoys spending time with family, friends, reading, and playing the guitar. He's another one who's got a brave smile and love winning, see Tom, he's got that smile, you can't help but smile with him, so thank you, Tom, for your service to our community, thank you. Jerry. So this is Jerry Rangel, she's our director of administrative services, and I'm going to bribe you, one of my best hires, I got to hire Jerry over 20 years ago here at the city, so she's been with the city since 2001, when she started here with us in the finance department as a senior accountant, she began serving as deputy director of the department in 2003, and was truly my right-hand go-to person. She became acting director of the department when I became city manager, and she accepted that appointment as director of finance in August of 2013. As director, Jerry is responsible for the city's budgeting, financial planning, and reporting, contract review, grants management, affordable housing, and anything else that we, assessment districts, yeah, she's another one that gets a lot of projects that are a lot of fun. She oversees all of the city's financial operations, fixed asset, audit coordination, she's a CSMFO budget reviewer, and her outstanding work on the city budget document has led the city to receive a CSMFO excellence in budgeting for numerous consecutive budget cycles. She heads up her department with strong leadership skills, grace, and humor, she is also the force behind the finance department. Finance department staff reports using her exceptional writing skills to translate detailed financial information into language that everyone can more easily understand. I love having Jerry on the team, because she will take difficult, complex issues and break them down, and it's easily understood. She's a consummate professional, extremely bright, knowledgeable, hardworking, dedicated, did I say hardworking, very nice, did I say hardworking, and all-around a great person. So thank you, Jerry, for everything you've done for the city, for me, and professionally and personally, in the last 20 years, I truly appreciate it, thank you. So Bob, last but definitely not least, Bob Malley's been with the city for 25 years. Bob is a police lieutenant with the Atascadero Police Department, he's been serving the community of Atascadero for over 25 years now, Lieutenant Malley has been an invaluable member of our city family. Prior to his original full-time assignment with the department as a patrol officer, Lieutenant Malley began his police service first as an explorer, then as a reserve officer, making him the longest-serving officer in the department. During his career, Lieutenant Malley has worked on a variety of assignments, including being a field training officer, field training program coordinator, range master, and canine officer. Lieutenant Malley's past involvement with the canine program helped him make it a very real success it is today, and he still called on to offer his expertise to the program. Lieutenant Malley is the only person known in our department to occasionally still carry the trusty old wheel gun, and owns not one, but two kilts, did not know this, learning more about you, one being described as a tactical kilt from 5110, okay, I have to ask, what's a tactical kilt? Ah, there we go. Lieutenant Malley was the interim chief, and served as my interim chief when Chief Haley retired, prior to Chief Masterson's appointment, serving both the community and the department well during that time as well as all of the other 25 years. So thank you, Bob, for your many years of dedicated service to our community, thank you, it's a true pleasure working with you, and I'm so glad you're part of the team, thank you.
I think one of the best things that we get to do is celebrate our employees, and I'm glad that the staff that you, everybody pulled that together, and we were able to do that outside, what you couldn't see off camera, but you got a little hint of, is we had Ms. Abigail with us, of course, Mayor Protim Newsom was there with Abigail, Councilmember Funk was there, and so really, the whole group, I know, Charles, we missed you, but it's very unlike you to miss something, so you know, occasionally, I guess you have to, but we had a great time being able to celebrate all of our employees, and I hope we get back to doing that again, so, all right, on to our consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and non-controversial by city staff, and can be approved in one motion unless there's somebody in the public or a member of the council that wishes to pull an item, so I'll look to my council members and see if there's anyone wishing to pull a consent calendar item, Councilmember Funk.
I don't want to pull an item, but if the mayor would indulge me to make a very brief comment about item number three.
Okay, absolutely, so let's put a pin in that for a moment, and then I will go to anyone who is on the phone or on the webinar, is there anyone wishing to pull an item or comment on an item on the consent calendar? If you're on the webinar, you can click that little raise hand icon, or if you're on the phone, press star nine. Seeing none, yes, Councilmember Funk.
I just want to point out, item number three is to get in line for a wildland fire engine replacement, this is a key tool for our fire department, and is something that we are able to fund because our community supported this city by voting for measure D20 last year, and I want to point out that we are keeping faith with what we promised to the community that we would make these kinds of investments in our public safety.
Thank you, Councilmember Funk, any other comments? All right, any public comments? All right, seeing none, I will ask for a motion and a roll call, motion first.
So who?
I'll second. A motion by Councilmember Funk, second by Mayor Protim Newsom, roll call, please.
Councilmember Funk?
Yes.
Councilmember Borbo?
Yes.
Councilmember Darris?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Newsom?
Yes.
Mayor Moreno?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes.
Thank you, and now we're on to updates for our city manager, Ms. Record.
I apologize, can you see my screen?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. So the first item I want to talk to you about tonight is the Atascadero Job Fair. So this is a reminder that a citywide job fair is being held tomorrow, Wednesday, September 29th, from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. at the Sunken Gardens. This free event is a joint effort by the Atascadero Chamber of Commerce and Eckerd Connects, and is sponsored by the Department of State Hospitals Atascadero. The job fair will be a great chance for businesses to meet with our potential new employee, with potential new employees, and for anyone seeking a job to find out about local opportunities that may be the perfect fit, including opportunities right here at the city of Atascadero. So job hunters can stop by anytime between 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. here at Sunken Gardens, and will be able to speak to employers about job openings and the skills that they may need. The job fair is being held tomorrow at the same time as the farmer's market, so don't forget the farmer's market, and information can be found in the Atascadero Chambers website. Want to also remind everybody, this weekend is one of our favorite times of year, and it's back, yay, we are going to have the Colony Days Parade and Festival. The annual Colony Days celebration will be held this coming Saturday, October 2nd, beginning at 10:00 a.m. It will run down El Comunal Real from Davis Autobody to West Mall, turn on West Mall, and head to Palma, right there by the Sunken Gardens. The festival will start immediately following the parade, and will continue until 3:00 p.m. with a variety of vendors, live music, and lots of great food to enjoy, all located in and around the Sunken Gardens. The wiener dog and small dog races will begin around noon, then there'll be a dog costume contest, and the parade awards will be announced at 12:30 p.m. Colony Days is brought to you by the Atascadero Colony Days Committee, and we thank the committee and their volunteers for their hard work that goes into putting on this event every year. It is truly a lot of work, and that group really puts their heart into it, so please, if you see a Colony Days committee member, make sure to thank them on Saturday, and for more information, please visit colonydays.org. We also have Creek Cleanup Day, it was on Saturday, September 18th, we had over 60 wonderful volunteers that came out to assist with the annual Atascadero's Creek Cleanup Day. We gave a very special thanks to Atascadero Mutual Water Company and Waste Management for all their help and coordination, we'd also like to give a shout-outs to the terrific members of the Atascadero Land Preservation Society, or ALPS, and the Beaver Brigade, and Atascadero High School Earth Club for all their hard work, not to mention the members of the Lions family for gathering up over 30 tires, so thank you to everyone for their time and dedication and for this cleanup effort. We also had a cornhole tournament on the same day, so there were a total of 160 participants, or 80 teams that played in the fifth annual showdown cornhole tournament. The event this year was filled with different experiences, including the new miniature golf course at Ravine Water Park on Friday, and live music on Saturday in the Sunken Gardens by the Deja Vu Band. A very special thanks to Mike with Knights of Columbus and Kiwanis of Atascadero for bringing back this family fun event. Participants attended from all over San Luis Obispo County, neighboring counties, as well as from San Diego, the Bay Area, the Central Valley, I played, it was a lot of fun, it was a lot of fun to talk to people from all over, in addition to locals. There were over $1,400 in cash prizes, and approximately $6,000 in proceeds will benefit the Boys and Girls Club of the Central Coast and Atascadero Boy Scout Troop Number 51. So if you're interested in playing and joining in this fun event, mark your calendars for next year, it's September 16th and 17th in 2022, I highly recommend it, so, thank you. Also want to talk about Cal Poly students, so last week, Tom Lewis of the Atascadero Historical Society gave a special tour of City Hall to a group of third-year undergraduate architecture students from Cal Poly. The students were accompanied by Cal Poly Assistant Professor of Architecture, Meredith Sattler. I skipped one, sorry, Charles, I know you worked hard on this. So on September 25th, about 20 volunteers from the Atascadero Rotary Club spent four hours repainting the recently reopened Atascadero Senior Center to help revitalize it. Members of the club donated a lot of labor and time, and Tara Paint donated all of the paint. The senior center reopened a few months ago after being closed for over a year due to the COVID pandemic, and they are offering many valuable and needed services to our area seniors once again, so thank you to the senior center, and thank you to the Rotarians for helping clean that place up, we appreciate it. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Thank you, Ms. Record, any questions from council? Amen, thank you so much, and we will now move on to community forum. Community forum is the portion of the meeting reserved for persons who are wishing to address the council on something that is not on tonight's agenda but over which we have jurisdiction as a council. Speakers are limited to three minutes, and we ask that you would state your name for the record. Subjects that come up during community forum cannot be a subject for discussion this evening, but we will triage where needed and make sure answers are given when needed. Maximum 30 minutes will be allowed for community forum, and if you are here on the webinar, you can simply raise your hand at the bottom of the webinar there, and if you're on the phone, you can press star nine, if you are listening and you haven't called in yet but would like to speak, that number once again is 805-538-2888. And with that, I will look to the webinar attendees, and we have Greg Gruall.
Thank you, Mayor, my name is Greg Greewall, G-R-E-W-A-L. I called in a couple weeks ago when Mr. Neal, John Neal, was talking about the GSP. One and a half years I spent on the Paso Robles Basin Advisory Committee, six and a half years I spent on the Water Resources Advisory Committee for District 5 for Supervisor Arnold, I have almost 10 years of water experience, I met Mr. Neal when I was on that committee. I am part of the quiet title lawsuit, which is fundamental to basin water use, which is what's in a GSP. I have been to the court in San Jose 32 times, I've been to every BOS meeting, which is Board of Supervisors, GSA meetings, DWR meetings, all the LAFCO meetings that deal with basin water in North County. So your city attorney, Mr. Parry, said that my comments might be going beyond the scope of the agenda, and I'd like to point out that the GSP is supposed to cover all inflows and outflows of the interconnectivity of all the water that comes to a basin or that leaves a basin. This is the watershed, this is the Salinas River, this is a Nacivento water, this is the basin of Atascadero, and also the Paso Basin because water is taken from both basins. So Mr. Neal said that they use water from Nacivento from May to September, and that they were going to use 2,000 acre feet of water roughly, well, they get 3,244, which means that they're letting go 1,244 acre feet, as I pointed out a couple weeks ago, I showed how Paso Robles lets go 5,000 acre feet a year in the last four years plus, so these things really do matter. So these things really do matter. I do not believe that letting water that you could use first, that you can't store or keep, is a best management practice. And best management practices are not what cost less, they're what benefits the basin. All of this stuff, regardless of whether it's that, not using the water that you pay for anyway, or the lawsuit or anything, are all going to have a direct effect on all the constituents in Atascadero, and they're going to look back when their water rates go up of why did this happen? And why weren't we saving the basin water and using all the water that's available to us that we can't store out of Osce Minto? Osce Minto costs $7 million to build. The Nasi Pipeline, that is only 45 to 49 miles, costs 200 million to build, and the taxpayers of the county paid $7.2 million for the first six years of that, and it hasn't been repaid when the participants took over that 6,100 acre feet that was left over. I know my time is up, so thank you very much to the board and everyone else.
Thank you, Mr. Greewall, and thank you for pronouncing your name for me, so I know for the future. And is there anyone else on the webinar wishing to speak, or if you're on the phone, you can press star nine? I will ask Luke if we have anyone on the phone, I'm not seeing, there we go, I think I see someone now.
Yes, we have Jeff Oslin on the line.
Good evening, council and city staff. My question is more towards Councilperson Charles Robo, but it's also a weighing concern with the breakup of IWMA, which I think is actually a good thing. When will we start briefing our residents of the new ordinances and laws coming into play? So businesses and residents can start getting accustomed to the new regulations in trash that are supposed to go into effect January 1. They may get delayed a year, but I think it's stuff that we need to start being proactive about. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Oslin. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Please raise your hand or press star nine. Is there anyone else on the phone? I still see the hand, but I don't know if that's remaining from Mr. Oslin.
Yeah, there's no other callers at this time.
Thank you, then, I will go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to council. Mr. Greewall, regarding your comments on water, as you know, it is a mutual water company, and so the city does not have jurisdiction over that. I would certainly bring up your concerns with Mr. Neal and with the Water Board. With regards to Mr. Oslin's comments, I would ask either our city manager or possibly Laura Christensen if you want to let the public know when we will, and I know IWMA is going to be a big part of that, but how will our residents become more familiar with what's going to be happening with 1383 and the requirements, both residents and businesses?
So IWMA has quite a few employees who have, excuse me, been actively engaging businesses and commercial businesses and multifamily in the city. And they've been doing that since the onset of AB 1826, which also addresses organics. So they've actually been doing a lot of that to bring everyone into compliance and educate on the regulations when it comes to organics. They've been doing that for the last several years. There's been a big push the last six months or so to really be going by foot into every single business, those who don't already have what, you know, a green waste bin, what you see those green bins to be doing that. And then residentially, we did something, Waste Management did something about a year ago to residents, sent out some letters then, and then we'll be working with Waste Management on that. We actually have pretty good compliance when it comes to residents and them already having green waste and some education getting out about recycling food waste as well. So a lot of that's already been going out, and more of that will be going out in the next several months. But IWMA really has already been walking to all of the commercial businesses and multifamily in town over the last several months.
Wonderful, thank you very much. I appreciate the two speakers this evening, and if there's any member of the public who has questions or need any information, whether you spoke tonight or not, you can always reach out to our city clerk's office at 805-470-3400 or cityclerk@atascadero.org. Going to move on to, we have one public hearing, but it's actually simply a notice of public hearing cancellation to amend Title 11 subdivisions of our municipal code, so that is actually being canceled. But I will go ahead and open that up to public comment in case there was somebody who was coming to the meeting and wanted to speak on that item. So if there is anyone, I'm opening public comment, raise your hand or press star nine. I'm seeing none, so we'll close public comment, and that public hearing is canceled. So we'll now move on to our management reports, we have two, and the first one is our Title IX, Chapter V, Accessory Dwelling Unit Text Amendments, and this will be our Community Development Director, Mr. Phil Dunsmore, that will be giving this report.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council. Yes, accessory dwelling units tonight, quite a discussion to have on these, lots of interesting topics that have come up with the change in state regulation. Just want to make sure, just checking and make sure you can see my screen, I'll start the presentation.
Yes.
Awesome, good, excellent deal. All right, well, effective January 1st of this year, the state changes to the accessory dwelling codes in the state of California have taken effect, and essentially superseded a lot of the items in our own Atascadero Municipal Code. We're just going to prompt us to change our code. Now, I will remind the council, we're not mandated to update our code, but there are certain benefits to updating our code to give us control on certain design options and certain things that we can have that really relate specifically to our community. And what I'm going to try and do tonight is differentiate the various aspects of the state code that have changed, and where we have the ability to weigh in on those local changes, and where we can't, where the state simply says, this is what you shall do in terms of accessory dwelling units. Really, their objective from the state is really to reduce the barriers, streamline the approval process, and expand capacity for ADUs. I'll add that our housing element policies that were recently adopted also address these topics, and that we are also joining a regional effort to produce stock plans for accessory dwelling units that will have available here locally that people can select from, also saving them a substantial amount of funds in the development of their own customized plans. So a couple of things we're doing outside of this, and I'll also remind the council too and the public that we have already adopted and adjusted a fee schedule that responds to the changes to state code. So let's talk about this really on a basic level. What are we talking about when we talk about accessory dwelling units? Or ADUs, as we like to call the acronym. What we're talking about is another unit on a property. Our code right now refers to them as secondary dwelling units. But now the state not only allows an accessory dwelling, they also allow a junior accessory dwelling unit, and they allow you to have both of those on property at one time. They can be inside of a house, so that the appearance of the house doesn't even change. They can be in addition to a house, so they can be a whole separate structure. Junior accessory dwelling units, on the other hand, really come down to something that's inside of an existing house or inside of an existing attached garage. We can get in more detail of that as I expand and talk about our code and the state code. So the way we see it as staff is our code does need an update. Again, it's not mandated, but it certainly has some benefits to doing that, to recognize all of the nuances of the state code. We last adopted our code, which we called again a secondary dwelling ordinance, back in 2004. It's part of our zoning code, which is Title IX of the municipal code. So what I'd like to do is I'm going to go through each of the points that are the main points of the state code and try and decipher what we really have to do in our code, what the state says we have to do, and what we might consider doing to amend our code that really relates to our community. And you'll know that I have several items that are discussion items, and that's where we can get into that discussion after I go through my entire presentation and go through all of these particular components. The first one I'm going to discuss is lot size. Our current code does mandate a one-acre net onsite served by sewer, which is a lot of our city. Now, the government code says that we can no longer regulate lot size unless it's specifically related to health and safety. So that means that we can look at things like fire hazards, we can look at things like wastewater connections. Do we have access to the city sewer system, or is the site on septic? So this leads us to the next, our really first discussion topic. What options do we have here with sites that are not hooked to the city sewer system? Well, we could leave it alone, we could be silent on this with regards to lot size for parcels not served by sewer. But if we do that, it does cause people to prospect about certain property, and they may buy a property thinking they can do an ADU, when indeed, they come in and they do the engineering analysis, they might find out that they can't, because certain sites can't accommodate multiple units because of the soil type, because of the area needed for their septic system. As an option, our code could set minimum lot sizes for parcels that aren't on sewer, kind of like what we have today. And we could have a gross minimum, we could have a net minimum. Generally, what that relates back to is our local area management plan, otherwise known as our LAMP, which we conducted in coordination with the Regional Water Quality Control Board. And we did establish standards for onsite wastewater systems. Now, in general, what that analysis produces is the fact that it really takes about a half an acre to support a single dwelling unit on a septic system. So that leads you one to believe that about an acre minimum lot size is about the average you need to support a primary unit and an accessory dwelling unit in most circumstances. Now, our code could do a blend, we could have a one-acre minimum unless it meets certain engineering criteria. Now, if one comes in and says, hey, I've got a three-quarter regular site and I want to do an ADU, that means that in those scenarios, they would have to hire an engineer, they would have to do perk tests on the property, they'd have to examine their existing system, they might have to expand their existing system, and they might have to look at other properties around them to see if they're in a zone that already has significant nitrogen loading because of the small lots around them. And there are several areas in the city that certainly do have that. So these are the options in this particular scenario. I'm going to touch on this again at the end of the presentation, because this is one of those areas that we probably want to get into a little more discussion on. There are other health and safety criteria that we need to take into account, though. We do have substantial fire hazard zones on the west side of Atascadero. We have the very high fire zone that consumes a large part of our west side, and we also have a wildland urban interface zone that is a big part of our west side. Recently, Assembly Bill 2911 also came out and said, you've got to establish areas that have limited road access in your city where you might need to adopt additional criteria. A lot of areas where there's only one way out, for example, and they're within a very high fire zone. Now, properties within those particular areas might not be good candidates for accessory dwelling units. And certainly, this is what the state code does, it allows you to identify these areas and say, hey, this is not a good idea to add more units to this area. So when we come back with a code, we can come back with definitive information to show you those areas, what they look like. It's a big part of the west side that has both a wild and urban interface, it has both a very high fire severity zone, and it has several pockets that only have one way out. Now, what the state code does allow for in those zones is the junior ADU, which is inside the house, which is inside existing improvements. But what would be discouraged in those areas is a true accessory dwelling, the detached accessory dwelling, or even an attached accessory dwelling, really increasing that sort of development out there. One of the topics that came up in the state code is owner occupancy. The government code eliminates owner occupancy requirements just through January 1st, 2025, for some reason. And now our code can be changed to add an owner occupancy requirement for junior ADUs, they do add that in there. But in this particular case, they say that we shouldn't be doing owner occupancy for standard ADUs at least through 2025. Do we need to adjust our code for this? Not really, it's already in the state code. We can adjust our current code to eliminate that provision, and we'll be all right. Vacation rentals, another meaty topic. Right now, we do have a number of accessory dwelling units in the city that act as vacation rentals, they have a business license, they are paying transient occupancy tax, and that's a typical process. The state right now has this Section 65852.2 that says that a local agency shall require that a rental of the accessory dwelling unit created pursuant to this subdivision, that's important note, be for a term longer than 30 days. So when an ADU is created, consistent with this current code, a new one, under all of these provisions and standards, the state is saying they want that unit to be preserved for essentially an affordable housing unit, or somebody from the family, or a long-term rental, not the the vacation rental. Now, that doesn't mean that you need to take away your existing vacation rentals or treat the ADUs that were built prior to this code that way as well. So there's a couple of different options here, so this is definitely a discussion item. So we can allow ADUs that are built prior to January 1 to be used as vacation rentals. And it's possible we could even go out on a limb and allow short-term rental units on properties as well, but what we're thinking is the state's going to come back and say, well, that's a short-term rental, that's not really an ADU, and now you have to allow another ADU, so that's something to consider there. And we can also go the other way, we can also choose to prohibit vacation rentals in any ADU that isn't currently permitted to operate as that. So those existing ADUs that are out there right now that were built prior to January 1, that aren't currently being used as a vacation rental, we could create a code that says, no more of that, because we want to honor what the state wants in these types of units, and really have them set aside as long-term rentals. So a couple of options here to consider as we craft our code. This is where we can kind of design what's going to be unique for Atascadero. Size, size does matter in this particular scenario. Our current code does allow ADUs up to 1,200 square feet, not even thinking about zoning or lot sizes or what's on the property. Now, the new government code does allow cities to regulate ADUs based on lot size, zoning, or even the size of a primary structure, so long as we allow at least 850 square feet, or if that unit has multiple bedrooms, more than one room, we need to allow at least 1,000 square feet. Now, this is a good discussion topic, because if we allow 1,200 square feet everywhere and anywhere, is that going to be consistent when now we're required to allow ADUs in a multifamily zone? Now, we're required to allow ADUs on a tiny little lot, is that appropriate? Or should we consider that there's very different zoning districts and very different development in the city and tie it to different things as the state code allows us to do now that the state has broadened the area where these ADUs can be developed? So we could, there's a couple of different options. We can stay as we are and continue to allow 1,200 square feet. We could have different requirements for a whole different unit that's over 1,000 square feet, and say, well, if you're going to go over 1,000 square feet, now you've got to meet setback, now you've got to meet a certain parking minimum and all these things, we can add conditions to it. Or you could base it on the primary structure size, or on lot size, or on zoning. Couple of different options here, I think this is an important one in terms of how we can guide design within the envelope of what the state would like us to do. Parking, not a lot of discussion here, the state code's pretty straightforward on this. We can't require more than one space per unit for accessory dwelling unit. Now, if they build an accessory dwelling in their garage and they take away their garage parking, we can't require that parking to be replaced, that's an interesting one. And they do say that we need to be flexible with where the parking is, whether it's in tandem, which is one behind the other, and in the driveway or the parking area or in front of the garage, or in the setback area. Where right now, we have a requirement for a 25-foot setback for the front yard of most structures in most zones. So unless it's unsafe, unless that parking's going to require that a vehicle backed up, let's say onto El Comino Real, for example, we need to be able to accommodate that. But again, all these provisions in the state code really tie back to health and safety. So if we demonstrate certain scenarios, for example, that, hey, if we allow parking in the setback, that's going to require, or that's going to cause a safety impact on Or that's going to cause a safety impact on certain roads, we can add those provisions, that's the only thing we could probably do here. Review timelines, another one, it may not take a lot of discussion, may not even need to be addressed in our code. The new code allows, actually didn't allow, requires us to either deny or approve an ADU application comes in the door within sixty days. That's a very tight timeline, given that we oftentimes receive a plan, oftentimes there may be some completeness issues. It goes through a code review, we submit it back to their architect or their team to address those comments. Sometimes we don't get it back for a couple of months. So that, a lot of that, really, that time is upon the applicant. So if that ends into that, ends up in that scenario, effectively, we would have to deny that application if we cannot approve it within the next sixty days. And then they would lose their initial application fees and plan check fees. As an alternative, what some cities are doing is they're having a separate agreement that if. If the applicant's unable to respond to those plan check comments with a timely manner. That the city and the applicant reach an agreement to extend that particular timeline separately from the government code. But essentially, this was put in here to streamline the process. But I don't know if it created unintended consequences by, you know, causing. Potentially additional fees on the applicant if either one of us are not able to meet that particular timeline. Junior ADUs, this is the first sign the state codes really differentiated junior ADUs from ADUs. Now, a junior ADU does have some pretty specific differences to it. First of all, we do have to allow them, even if we don't recognize them by our city ordinance. A junior ADU actually has to be within the existing residence or within an attached garage. It does say that these units with junior ADUs should be owner occupied. And the maximum size is five hundred square feet, it's supposed to be something that. Is easy to adapt in in an existing house and doesn't create significant neighborhood compatibility issues. And is a streamlined addition, basically adding a separate kitchen and adding wall spaces within an existing residence. Other than really identifying those provisions that echo the state's requirements, not a lot needs to happen in terms of a junior ADU. Setbacks are a big one. Now, the state code says that we can't require more than four feet from the side of your property lines. If the ADU is sixteen feet in height or less. They do allow us to keep the street yard setback, which is twenty five feet. Now, our code would need to be amended to really identify. Street yards when they're on a corner, when you have a corner property, we require ten feet in our code. So we would just need to reword that to make sure that that street yard on the corner lot is still a street yard, it's not a side yard. Otherwise, we'd be required to place an ADU as close as four feet to the street on a corner property. Which is going to cause some issues in terms of aesthetics and in terms of site distance. We can easily accommodate that, but back to the four foot issue, it's something to think about because. If you do push a unit up to four feet on the corner of a property, for example. The building code requires that anything that's closer than five feet be designed as fire resistant construction. That means it can't have any windows or openings. And it's essentially a stucco wall or block wall. So aesthetically, that does create some issues with that setback. And so as we come forward with some design options, it might be something that we would need to address. Now, if that ADU is higher than sixteen feet as peak of that roof, it still has to comply with typical setbacks. Or if the ADU meets certain other criteria, it's going to have to comply with later setbacks, for example, if it's oversized or. Other particular issues, but in general, that's an interesting scenario. I want to bring this topic up because it creates a lot of confusion and I think our staff's still confused about this one. So are a lot of legal considerations on this. And it's when we talk about multifamily zones, single family zones, planned developments. What they did to accompany this state law is they did adopt an assembly bill that talked about. Common interest developments, and the idea was to make sure that in common interest developments where you have CCNRs that regulate. Properties, that those CCNRs couldn't stop an ADU from coming into place. But they reserved that prohibition to only single family residential zoning districts. So it's really critical to understand, it's only a single family districts. So in a single family district, if there's a planned development or a condo development or some other common interest development where they're sharing improvements. And they have CCNRs that say we don't want ADUs, those are simply null and void. Now, it doesn't say that about multifamily properties, now in a Tascadero. Most of our planned developments are actually in multifamily districts, they're in apartment districts, they're in districts that were intended to be apartment buildings. But they really got built like single family developments with individual little tiny lots and houses. It appears that the assembly bill and state code still allow the CCNRs that were established in those planned developments. And those multifamily zones to still prohibit ADUs. And it also appears that within those planned developments that. We would still want to see an amendment to that planned development before the ADUs were allowed. So in other words, when someone buys into a planned development in multifamily district. They buy into that planned development thinking, this is what I bought into. I have common ownership of the driveway and some improvements, I'm here with all my neighbors. And we share these improvements and I'm in a little planned development, it's probably never going to change unless. We all come to agreement that we're going to change our PD, and that's typically how PDs work. Well, you throw the ADU in there and that's something that nobody ever expected, so it appears that. They will still have the right to maintain their ADU, maintain their planned development the way it was approved. Without the addition of ADUs, unless they all choose to say that, hey, it's okay to add ADUs and we're going to make this consistent with our CCNRs. And we're going to amend our PD, so a little bit of complexity when it comes to PDs and multifamily zones. It's a little bit of a gray area, but I think we understand where that's going and. There are some things we need to consider there. Impact fees, this is something we already took action on last year. State code does say that we can't charge development impact fees for anything that's less than seven hundred and fifty square foot. And is proportionate for ADUs of over seven fifty, in other words, proportionate to a larger single family home. Now, when we did this study last year, we looked at, okay, what's the average size of a single family home in a Tascadero? And we proportionally addressed the impact fees over that seven fifty. And we created an entirely new fee structure for accessory dwelling units that ranged from seven fifty to twelve hundred square feet. This has already been in effect, people have already been paying these fees, this is consistent with the state code, so luckily. This is not really on our radar right now, it's something that's already wrapped up. This is just for information, ADUs do add the city's quota for affordable housing, we did consider this in our housing element. So it's part of our regional housing needs allocation, arena numbers. We did assume that half the ADUs that get built would end up in a low income criteria and half in moderate. And that's because of the size, we would assume that a lot of ADUs are going to be tiny JADUs, junior ADUs, and a lot of them are going to be. Different, they might be up to twelve hundred square feet, be a moderate category. We actually projected a two hundred and twenty five to develop in a Tascadero, an eight year cycle. Because of the state law changes, because of the incentives, because of the reduced impact fees, because of the stock plans. And because of the more flexible standards and where you could build them, we assumed that to be the number. The state accepted that number as part of our housing element, and that's where we are. And so it's just something to know, to keep in your back pocket. One of the provisions that is in the code is that we do need to delay enforcement on non. Health and safety violations, someone builds an ADU and there's some violations with it. They are allowed up to five years to correct those violations, so long as they don't consider. Those violations to be a health and safety violation, now I don't know what category those would be. Maybe it's, okay, they didn't put in the right setback, they built something different than the plan. They didn't get the right permits, things like that, but all in all, we go to inspect it and the person applies for a new permit. And we find that there's not a significant health and safety violation, we need to work with them for five years to correct it. Now, if it is health and safety violation, this goes out the door. This is something that doesn't really trigger amendments to our local code, but something to be aware of that's just in in the state code. And again, I'll just touch on ADUs and apartment projects, different than the planned developments I was talking about earlier. This is the big new change, an ADU in a multifamily structure. How do we deal with that in an apartment structure, it's a little different. And the state code is a little difficult to read when it comes to this. But when they talk about ADUs in multifamily, they talk about an ADU in an apartment building. So let's say there's an apartment building that has ten units in it. Some of those units could be split off in ADUs internally. What the state code says is those ADUs shouldn't exceed twenty five percent of the units within that apartment structure. And they also say that per project, per multifamily project, there could actually be one detached unit on the site as well. So a couple of provisions there that we will need to address in our. In our standards, just to state what they are. They're pretty straightforward, can't really play with it too much, we could play with design parameters on that. That's about it, I think I talked about this earlier, ADUs and planned developments. They're essentially treated the same as apartment units, except again, back to the CCNRs issue. Back to amending a master plan of development, unless they already adopted their PD considering. That there would be these extra structures in their in their plan. So what are the next steps? We, hopefully after tonight, after we cash out some of these topic areas and get some general direction from council and the community. Would take a draft code to the planning commission. Once the planning commission provides review and comments to that code, we would make any amendments necessary and then hope to get to HCD. One of the steps that is required in adopting a new ADU code is that HCD endorses it kind of in the same fashion they endorse our housing element. And if they do that, then we could bring it forward to city council for adoption and then on to the second reading. There is a different path we could use, we could go to city council first after planning commission and then go to HCD. But there is a time limitation in terms of going to our second reading. And it's unknown as to whether the state would meet our time mandates in that scenario. So if we do it between planning commission and city council, then I think we're a little more flexible on that time limitation about the adoption. The recommendation tonight is to look back at these amendments that apply to ADUs and provide direction to staff. For these six amendments that we can bring forward a draft code, as mentioned in those next steps. I'm going to open to questions now, I can bring those topic areas back up, I have them at the end of this presentation. And we can get into that, I'd like to pause now and hear from you.
Thank you, Director, and do you have a screen that has all those topics, so just as we're asking questions? We can kind of see how that fits within.
I have these slides that go through those discussion items. So really, it comes down to septic systems and discussion items on lot size minimums. Owner occupancy for JADUs, vacation rentals. The size. Any other items?
I think what we're, let's see, there was. Okay, so I think it really comes down to in our staff report on page fifty three at the bottom, areas of discussion. What we're really looking at here would be minimum lot size for septic suitability and the fire concerns. Number two, the owner occupancy requirements, three would be short term rentals, four. Size of ADUs, JADUs, five would be parking requirements, six would be the application review period. Seven is junior ADUs and then eight is building the setbacks for ADUs. And then we have a few things that really don't require comment or discussion because there's no change needed. And then finally, ADUs within multifamily properties and planned developments, does that sound? What we're looking at, Director?
Yes, yes.
Okay. All right, so. Instead of breaking it down piece by piece, I'll do that when we get to deliberation. But right now, let's just go with. Questions overall from council for staff and. You know, maybe ask your your key ones and then see what else comes up, don't feel the need to exhaust every single question you have. Because I'm sure we will get to that this evening, so I will look to my council members, Mayor Potem Newsom, followed by Councilmember Darris.
Phil, as, can you refresh my memory on how the, looking at street yards? Isn't there a review or a design review? Process for those that are trying to stay compatible to the neighborhoods? I think some neighborhoods don't utilize all of the setbacks, some had really. Reduced setbacks, some had bigger setbacks, but if it was a neighborhood. Consistent with the neighborhood, they could ask for a waiver, a design review, is that correct?
There is a provision in our zoning that generally allows for that for regular development. Different than ADUs, ADUs have such smaller setbacks, but when you come to street yards, yes, there is. So if all the houses on a block have a lesser setback, there is some discretion to say, hey, this is consistent with the pattern of development in the block. Let's, you know, let's provide a lesser setback, so the zoning already has that built into it for street yard zone.
Street yards only, and none of that changes with the regulations or any of these updates, correct?
Correct, it does not, so these regulations allow us to maintain our current street yard setback standards. Which would mean maintaining that flexible standard and maintaining our regular twenty five foot standard elsewhere.
Okay, thank you, that's the only question I have.
Okay, I guess I'm up, thank you, okay, Phil, I got a few questions here on. For lots that are on septic, that are not on city sewer, if you're going to build an ADU, if you're going to use a septic system. Can it use the existing septic system or expand the existing septic, or does it have to be a separate system for the ADU?
They can use the existing system if they can demonstrate that the existing system can accommodate it. So they would need to get us an engineer to say, okay, you've got a, you know, X gallon tank. And you've got a properly working leach field. And tanks and leach fields are designed to accommodate a certain number of bedrooms. And let's say they only have a two bedroom house and they're going to add a two bedroom ADU and their septic system's designed for four bedrooms, they can do that. Most scenarios, the septic system is actually designed to handle the house they build on the site. And in many cases, they would have to be expanded by adding a new tank and making sure that they have. Additional leach field area and expansion area, so that's what we're seeing is a lot of, you know, it's. Well, I guess it's fifty fifty, in some cases, the system can handle it, in some cases, they're going to have to expand it, but it takes an analysis. Any other piece of that analysis also is looking at the more regional issue of nitrogen loading. And whether they're in a pocket of really small lots where we have a problem with the groundwater.
Okay, so that answered my question, because I was under the impression that each building had to have its own system, which definitely makes it challenging for almost any lot. So if you have to make the existing system larger to accommodate the ADU than that, then that's acceptable, okay, that's good. You mentioned the ADU, if an ADU is used as a short term rental. Then you're saying the state would then allow another ADU to be built on the property?
Now, that's an assumption, we're saying, hey, let's look at all the options that we have available to us on the table right now. The state's saying, in terms of their new policy, they don't want you to allow for a new ADUs to become vacation rentals. But we could design a code, if we really love vacation rentals to be an accessory vacation rental on someone's property, we could design a code that allows for that. But we fear that the state will probably, very likely, in fact, we checked with our housing consultant on this one. Very likely would say, well, you can do that, but you're going to have to allow. Another ADU now on a property because that doesn't, that doesn't satisfy our desire to supply this long term rental housing.
Okay, I I see that as being a problem, because I mean, how would we know that if someone, they may say they're going to use their, this newly built ADU as a short term rental. So they can build another ADU and then six months, a year later, neither one is used as a short term rental and they got. Went around the code and now have two ADUs on their property.
Absolutely.
So, okay, so I mean, what can we do to, to ensure that something like that doesn't happen?
But we don't have to allow a vacation rental with a new ADU. What we have to ensure is that we follow the state code, because they're going to make us do that when we review our code. By not allowing new ADUs to become vacation rentals.
Okay. On the the timeline for approval, the sixty day approval time that you had mentioned. And how, you know, you get the plan check corrections back. and how, you know, you get the plan check corrections back, if the architect sits on it for too long, it's gonna go beyond the 60 days and then, you know, that's a problem also. Can that be crafted, the language be crafted in that where the, the 60-day clock only ticks, so to speak, when the plans are in the city's hands? So I mean, we turn in the drawings for your first review, you have it for 25, 30 days. You give it back for plan check corrections, the clock stops until we turn it back in for those additional corrections. That, that seems to me a more logical way to do it because
Yeah, I, I like that too, and it is more logical, but it's not what the state's asking us to do. So what we can do though, we can do that, but we'd have to do that by producing an agreement that the property owner agrees that we're gonna do that separately, even though the code, the state code asks us to maintain that 60 days. So there is a provision. But, you know, it kind of becomes challenging that one. It's um it's interesting. It's um it's, it's one that's gonna take a little more research on what other cities are doing with that right now.
Okay, and then my last question for now momentarily. In, you said that most of the planned development overlays are in multifamily zone areas. A question I have is if, if there, if they put a planned development overlay and then build single-family residences on all the lots, why was, why was a planned development choice utilized instead of just rezoning it to single-family lots?
Because they get a higher density and they can make smaller lots. So in other words, for example, let's say someone's got an ARM F10 property where you can build 10 units per the acre. They can also subdivide that down to 10,000 or actually, well, 43,560s an acre. They can sub that, divide that down uh to, you know, 3,000, 4,000 square foot lots, right? And put a road in there. And that's what, that's what they want to do. And then they create each one of those houses, it being maybe 1,800, 2,000 square feet, so they perfectly fit the lot with a five-foot setback on each side. And that's a way to maximize financial return, have a large house but have a small lot. So that's been very desirable from the development community over the last decade to do that, to create that kind of um smaller lot, low maintenance lot living, but with a larger house. That's been a lucrative way to do that. And was that the intent of our multifamily zones or our general plan? No, the intent was to have these areas set aside for uh different types of, of smaller multifamily attached housing. But we found over the years, plan developments are okay. But yeah, when put into this scenario, it poses a whole new interesting equation, especially when they tie some of these provisions to multifamily or single-family zoning, it's like the CCNRs one. So it's kind of interesting. As we move forward in time, as we adopt a new uh set of objective design standards and small lot subdivision standards um and new general plan, and we have the influence of the state and our new housing element, we're gonna be forced to, to maintaining smaller units in our multifamily districts in order to achieve the densities that we have assumed in our housing element. Otherwise, what's happening and what's happened over the last decade is a lot of these multifamily sites have developed a much lower density than what we allow. We're seeing a lot of the high-density multifamily zones with only half the number of units in them because the units are roughly twice the size of the size we've assumed. So it, it's interesting. So I think our code in the future needs to change that so that we preserve our areas for single-family on the west side and elsewhere where the larger lots are and the larger single-family are, and preserve our multifamily for the more affordable by design housing that's smaller with, with still ample yard and open space and and good amenities. But it's been quite the opposite. It's been very, very small yards and very large houses in these multifamily zones.
Okay, so, so our single-family, so single-family residential lot, what's the minimum lot size? I, I mean, if I had, if I had, I don't know, a couple hundred acres and I wanted to make it a single-family residential zoned area, what is the minimum lot size for anywhere?
Multiple, we have different single-family zones in the city based on whether you're served by sewer, uh whether you're not served by sewer, whether you're further away on the west side. So our lot sizes range all the way from one-half acre all the way up to 10 acres based on a whole different set of criteria. And there's four different districts in that single-family zone. So there's quite a range. And with our next general plan, we'll have to reevaluate that, and especially given SB9 and the fact that the state now wants us to allow all these lots to be cut in half in certain zones that can accommodate it. We've got to, we've got to reevaluate the entire stock. So um you know, that's, that's not an easy question to answer. It's variable all over the place.
Okay, all right.
The bare, the bare minimum of any single-family zone right now is half acre. And that's why uh people want the flexibility and they go to these multifamily zones where we have up to 24 units an acre allowed. And they use that density to apply to a planned development, so they can create small lots.
Okay.
But what we'd rather do is have small lot standards that already pre-prescribe those development standards, so they can create small lots kind of on a uniform turn, set of turns. So that we maintain these smaller units and we maintain the densities that we assumed in the areas where we wanted to put the density.
All right, that makes sense. Thank you.
I, I'll, I'll go ahead. That, I was waiting for the mayor to queue me in, but
Oh, I, I did. Maybe we crossed, but yes.
Oh, okay. We, I think you were muted. So, uh, anyway, I will uh um, a couple of things. Junior ADUs. What's the difference between a junior ADU and a small ADU? And why do we want, and what are the benefits of how, of designating junior ADUs as a thing?
Well, the state sees them differently. The state does have um a mandate that, um, or not a mandate, but it I believe it is a mandate that a, a house with a junior ADU stay owner occupied. And that a junior ADU is truly within the existing house. It's not something separate. Uh, and then a junior ADU is limited to 500 square feet. What they wanted to do was really set aside these units to be really affordable by design in a low category and really fitting into neighborhoods without creating an impact to the neighborhood because it's hardly noticeable when it's inside of the existing house. So they created this separate category and they gave separate provisions to it. And they basically even also on top of that said that if you put a JDU in your garage, they don't have to create uh separate parking for it. So they, they threw out some incentives um to do these junior ADUs to make it more flexible and more flexible where they're filled. That's really the only difference. But if someone does a small ADU, that's 450 square feet. You know, it's relatively the same thing. The difference is it's more flexible because with a smaller ADU, if you don't call it a junior ADU, you could put it out in your backyard, um detached from your house. Um, you can do different things with it, but you do have to supply a, a parking space for it. So um, that's really the only difference. It's not a huge difference um to that end.
So if we have an ord, but if we have an ordinance that allows for junior ADUs as a thing, then it creates a pathway so that somebody can do a garage conversion as a junior ADU and then also put an ADU out in their back 40.
That's right. But even if we don't put it in our code, the pathway is already there. The state's already supplied the pathway. So regardless of whether we put it in our code or not, it's there. We can just respond to it by playing with some of the parameters to customize it for our city as long as we don't step on the toes of the government code.
Okay, when people come to the desk and are looking to do an ADU project or something, are they typically well researched in all the finer, fine points of the state code as well as the local code? Or are they mostly looking at what's the local code?
No, it's usually an educational process every single time. Uh, there's very few people that know all the whole bit. There's some that do, but most people that approach us on an ADU are homeowners. And this is the first time they're building something and we, we need to talk about it and, and provide all the options for them. Um, you know, unless they've already received advice from someone who's in the know. So um you know, a lot of people do, are aware of the basics of these policies that, hey, you can build one. But they don't know all the nuances of what they can and can't do and the fact that they don't have to pay impact fees or, you know, what, what the difference is between being on sewer or not on sewer. So it's a discussion each and every time. And that's why it's important to put some of these provisions in our code because you do get a lot of realtors, a lot of homeowners, a lot of perspect, prospective buyers wanting to do an ADU and assuming they can do it when they buy a property and they're very disappointed if they find out they can't when they've assumed that, when they purchased the property. So it's definitely really good to get the word out there. It's definitely really good to have your code clear on it uh and to put in the provisions where it conflicts with health and safety.
Great. You know, it to that end, uh, one of the things that's um you know, we're looking at is, is in help, the health and areas where for health and safety reasons due to fire and sewer, maybe we shouldn't be having um ADUs um other than junior ADUs. And particularly for the one, this, the fire ones might be more obvious to people, but the sewer one, they uh, the sewer ones could be not apparent to people that their property wouldn't be suitable. Is that simple enough that we could do ultimately a map with yellow, red and green areas saying, you know, yes, here it's a go, you know, no, here it's definitely not a go and here you know, the yellow areas, you know, maybe, but you're gonna have to um hire an engineer and pay an extra fee and your odds maybe are not very good.
Possibly, but map, mapping is, is difficult to do accurately and and the conditions change over time. Probably one of the better ways to do it is tie it to a lot size standard, yeah, like we have now today. In fact, our lot size standard is based on regional water standards, like I mentioned earlier, that it really takes about a half acre to support a dwelling unit on an onsite wastewater treatment system. And, you know, there's certain cases where you know, you may have a smaller property and the properties all around you are larger and it's not gonna create an issue, but you also may be in a pocket of a whole bunch of properties that are smaller. And if everyone in that pocket puts in an ADU on a site less than half an acre, you're gonna eventually have a problem where the nitrogen loading in the soil is gonna create issues and um you're gonna have a problem, kind of a problem reminds me of Los Osos. So um the, probably the best way to handle it is say, all right, on sites that aren't gonna help to sewer, uh, we need to have a minimum standard, or we need to say you need to do engineering analysis on your property to demonstrate that one, you can accommodate the ADU and two, that um you're not gonna create a regional problem. Now, that's a significant cost burden for someone to bear. So if we don't put provisions in our code and we leave it really flexible, we are gonna get people prospecting and buying properties seeking, they can do an ADU and they're gonna come into the city and they're gonna be kind of angry when they find out oh, you've got to spend 30,000 on an engineer or do all this analysis. And it's a, maybe then at that point. Do we want to go there is a question, or do we want to just blanket the city and say, you know what, we're pretty safe to say that on an acre site, you can probably do an ADU um and a primary house. Maybe even a JDU, as long as your system can accommodate these or you can expand your system to meet it. And then the reality is, um, you know, we look at areas that aren't served by sewer um that are in those smaller sizes. Um, there's not a whole lot of them. We do have areas, I'll throw out some examples. There's some areas that are south of, of Pine Mountain. There's some areas like River Gardens which are prime examples that these are smaller sites that don't have sewer access. And so, I mean, you could, you could do something like a parcel-by-parcel mapping. Uh, and so we, we have to look at that each time somebody comes in and says, hey, are you in the red zone or the green zone? Let's see. It's possible, but it might be a lot easier to interpret if we simply have a lot size um based on sewer service, because most of these areas that have the regional concentration issues are smaller lot sizes, so that they'd be omitted unfortunately from being able to do ADUs. Might not be able to, to prevent JDUs in them, though if they can demonstrate that their bedroom load can be accommodated in the um septic system.
Okay. Um, I think I will, oh, um one, one more question. You mentioned uh going to HCD. That's the State Housing and Community Development Agency.
Yes.
Right, okay. And if if the planning commission, you know, comes through this and rec, finds that they recommend a lot of changes to what staff has or that they think council should look at it first, is that, it would be, would we be able to switch that order administratively?
Yeah. Yeah, here's, the only problem is that, and you know, maybe our city clerk could weigh in on this. If we well, maybe a way to do it is go to planning commission and, and go to city council, but not not actually approve the ordinance and just go to HCD, run it through the HCD process, then come back to council a second time to actually adopt the ordinance and then go through second reading. So that's one way to do it. We need to check on the, the order though from HCD and see whether they want it after the council endorses it or whether it's okay if our planning commission endorses it. It's one thing we haven't actually checked on that avenue. So we actually, when we develop this code, we can further vet that particular process and determine that. I think our assumption is that HCD needs to look at it once it's been solidified by the city. And what that means is do we have to approve it? First, possibly. If that's the case, we only have so much time between the city council adoption and second reading, I think a couple of months. And if HCD decides to drag their feet or if they come back with changes, we're gonna have to restart the process, but maybe that's just the way it works.
Okay, so then we can, it sounds like we can be flexible with that. Uh, depends on, you know, what the planning commissions take on this is, and let them help us inform things. Okay. Um, I will defer my other questions to when we get into the details of particular topics.
Councilmember Borbo.
Yeah, I have several questions and maybe I'll defer some of them as well. Um, but to understand some of the impacts of this on, on current residents. When you talk about, you know, the state is essentially saying no CCNRs can prohibit ADUs anymore. I think of neighborhoods like the Lakes or Apple Colony, Las Lomas, who I, you know, all have homeowners associations. I'm not sure whether they were planned developments or not, but uh, they're the kind of places that typically would have some CCNRs. Uh, there's the Town Oaks, or Town Homes, I think Hidden Oaks near um closer to Home Depot, um probably have homeowners associations with CCNRs. So for folks in those kind of neighborhoods to understand that the state is essentially saying regardless of what your CCR say, you, you have to allow ADUs.
Yes.
Correct? I mean, is that, that's a correct.
Yes, that's exactly what you're saying.
And in, and in, in the case of a junior ADU, that is if your neighbor wants to turn their garage into a a, a junior ADU, and I'm thinking like in Hidden Oaks, small town homes where you already, you know, can't put a car in the garage, but you now, you can now turn the garage into a junior ADU and put another car out on the street. Is that a possibility?
Yes. Now, if Hidden Oaks is a PD in a multifamily zone, there's probably other implications to that because then they would have to amend their master plan of development, which would cause us to look at all of those topics. So there's a little string attached to that if it's in a multifamily district. But in a single-family zone, um, you know, Lakes is a good example. The CCNRs can't prohibit that and we would have to allow that.
Gotcha. Um, and so potentially a, a, a junior ADU in the garage and an ADU in the backyard.
Yes.
Okay, and on page 42, and you talked about minimum lot size. I was wondering, um, you know, we can't use limited or uh, have a minimum lot size to limit ADUs. But in Tescara, we have a lot of slope and you already have rules regarding slope. Um, you know, and slope even affects the minimum lot size on the west side and can
Absolutely.
Go, you know, as high as 10 acres as you said. But if somebody has an existing lot, you know, I don't, 0.6 acres or something, somewhere on one of our closer-in-town hills. Not sewer, served by sewer, they cannot, they have a right to build a house. They gotta, you know, do it on the slope. Would they also then be entitled to build a um, um, an ADU? Uh, but, but would they have to come? I assume, of course, they'd have to comply with the safety aspect of building on a slope, but is there anything else that would limit that?
Well, CEQA is still not out the door. So there's still the California Environmental Quality Act in terms of developing on a slope, would it trigger environmental Developing on a slope, would it trigger environmental impacts? Would it uh create resource issues, tree removals, grading issues? There's still all those issues on the table. They can still do it, certainly from a basic property development code standpoint, but. If it triggers substantial grading on substantial slopes, they're gonna be in a precise plan process, which is a. CEQA environmental review process, and then we have provisions from that. Oh, Kelly's telling me something different. CEQA's out. I wasn't aware of that. She just gave me a text on that.
I'm assuming though that they'd also have to be able to have the right kind of driveway to a house in back, that sort of thing.
Yes. Yeah, there's definitely some issues with the slope that we'd have to address from a design standpoint.
Gotcha. Um, and in your presentation, you um, and in the staffer board, it talks about. Rent or vacation rentals or things built to be vacation rentals since twenty twenty. You mentioned on your, one of your slides, twenty twenty-one. Is it? Is this? Law in effect has been in effect since twenty twenty, right?
Twenty twenty is the accurate date. I apologize.
Okay, and so what I'm wondering is um. Has anybody been coming in saying, hey, I read this state law and I want to build an ADU down the city's current code? You know, I expect to be able to do this. Have we had people coming in and, you know, expecting to be able to build? Under the state law as opposed to current city code?
Yes, absolutely. We have a whole line of people coming in right now. Uh, and a lot of those people are on sites that are not served by sewer. Um. And what we learned recently is that only the portions of our code. That are inconsistent with state law are null and void. So actually. Our section in our code that requires a one acre minimum, we could still enforce today. Based on health and safety standards that are adopted by regional water board. In terms of a septic wastewater system, but for some time, we were inviting folks in. On sites of less than one acre, if they could demonstrate by a civil engineer that their system can accommodate. Or that they could enlarge their system on their property to accommodate the ADU. But that was prior to us doing a larger analysis. Based on the nitrogen loading of particular properties and the concentrations of particular properties. If they all chose to do ADUs. So we've now done that additional analysis, which puts us right back in a loop. Uh, to our one acre minimum size being something that we should stick to. Uh, in some of these particular areas. So anyway, we have had people inquiring. That's the the short answer. Lots of them.
Right. Well, I see that, you know, people on larger lots, you know, they have to deal with the septic issue, but. If they're on larger lots, they've already been allowed to do an ADU under city's current policy.
Yes.
I'm curious, are how many ADUs have we been? Uh, you know, had requested, you know, people come in, want to build an ADU on a much smaller lot, one that. You know, would not have previously allowed an ADU under the city's ordinance, but under this state law does. You know, and we had a whole.
There's a handful. I mean, it hasn't been dozens. It's just been a handful, less than ten.
Okay, just a handful. Okay, gotcha. That's what I was wondering, just a perspective, whether we're talking a handful or whether we're talking dozens or scores of them.
Yeah, I know.
So, okay, gotcha. And then the the four foot setback, Giles will find very interesting in regards to. You know, it it might work for somebody, but neighbors probably not gonna be real pleased to have a an ADU four feet from their property. And in our community where we have, we have a lot of larger lots. Um, which are atypical. You know, to other cities in California. So if I have acreage, I, you know. You know, if I have five acres, but I live next door to Heather, I can turn around and put my ADU four feet from. You know, the property line, uh, even though I have acreage. I mean, there's no, we have no ability to. Address that setback issue based on.
Don't know. Someone could have a twenty acre lot and say, you know what? I want that ADU to be a quarter mile from me, right in that corner, right next to Joe's house. And I want to put a wall right there and yes.
That's what I wanted to understand. Okay, that's what I thought, but I just. And there's, I just wanted to check that there's no latitude in that. Okay, and then um. Gotcha. Um, and you've talked in the past about having pre-approved plans to try to expedite. People building ADUs, you know, and I think we, you know, we even had the grant to help develop design standards for such a thing. If we, and that's designed to help people get through the permitting process faster and cheaper, et cetera. Those pre-approved plans. Is there any um latitude in there in terms of uh saying, okay, here's here's a pre-approved set of plans? If you're on a flat lot, if you're on a lot over this size, if you have a certain setback, et cetera, what is this? Does this law in essence say? You know, that if you had a set of, you know, if we had pre-approved plans, somebody could take them and build them four feet from the neighbor's house and. On a slope, et cetera.
The the intent is to not have restrictions tied to the pre-approved plans. To be honest with you, we could do what we want with those pre-approved plans. But um and and tie certain provisions to them.
Okay.
I don't think that would look be looked upon favorably. Yes, that wasn't the intent is to have pre-approved plans available. So that you could comply with the the state or city code, but um.
Right.
Certainly there's an avenue if you wanted to go further and say, well, you can only use our pre-approved plans if you. If we, if you put it where we want it. That's a possibility. I think that's that door is open.
Right. Well, I'm just wondering, I understand what the state is trying to do, but as they frequently do, you know, they do a one size fits all. Such a thing, and and so I'm not asking these questions to cast. Negative light on, uh, you know, on the building of ADUs, not at all, but I do want to understand what our latitude is in some of these cases. So that's the the. Purpose of my questions and that's all I have for now there.
Thank you. Uh, council member Funk.
A couple of follow-ups. Uh, one is um. Uh, the volume of applications that we're getting. About how many uh ADU applications are we getting that are actually getting built? On an annual basis? Can you hazard a guess of the range?
Feels like there's um. Going forward, probably gonna see a lot more since since the impact fees were reduced, we probably have a lot more. Um, let me see if my staff can weigh in on how many we're actually seeing. I thought it was about ten annually. I'm thinking maybe it's more than that. In fact, we've had. Probably recently inquiries of, you know, spoken to at least thirty at least, if we look at all across the gamut, you know, different. Different locations. So I think, you know, we asked, like we estimated over that eight-year period to be quite a few, so. We estimate we might see, you know, thirty to forty a year, I think as of up to now. Um, it's been in a very unusual year because the the cost of construction materials went way up. Uh, labor availability went way down. And, you know, it's been an anomaly year, but we've still seen um. You know, quite a few applications, I think at least ten. You know, for our community our size, it's um, it's quite a lot.
Yeah, but but the reading the numbers are a pace of close to thirty a year.
Yes.
If we stay on pace on that average over eight years.
And I think once we, once we get out there and adopt a new code and there's more public information out there and we have stock plans. That's a good assumption.
Okay, and then uh if on regarding the override of the CCNRs. Uh, if a property is built with a deed restriction. On an outline building or uh specifying that that can't be used as an ADU. Um, is? Does the state law override that deed restriction also?
I don't know. That's a good question. Uh, the state law may not override that, but the state law is gonna say, well, you can still be built. An ADU on your property. Um, and the state law, you know, was gonna say you can still build something in your house or attached to your house or somewhere else on your property. Even if that structure is restricted for some reason or another, for whatever reason. It's not going to preclude you from doing another ADU.
Yeah.
So there's some interesting provisions that have yet to be really vetted by. Um, legal teams and really vetted by our team as well. A lot of nuances to this code and and some additional late, you know, assembly bills that also change it. So we're kind of watching other communities and other legal challenges to see how things evolve.
Understood. It's a fluid area of the law. Thank you. That's all for now.
Okay.
Director, I was wondering, we've talked a little bit about if we allowed. Vacation rentals, but they wouldn't be under this provision. They would go under the right, you know, the traditional code if we kept that available. But then what you're saying is they, the state may say, you know, hey, those people can still put an ADU under this provision. So. I'm assuming that would mean that anyone who currently has an ADU with a vacation rental. You're thinking maybe not now, but in the very near future would be allowed to apply for a second ADU under this provision that would be a long-term rental.
That's a good question. If they already have an ADU built. And it's essentially quote unquote non-conforming, would they be entitled to build a second one? I don't know if that's true. I think what we were saying is if that, we said, hey, you can do vacation rentals and ADUs with a new ADU and they decide to do that. The state may say, no, 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 you need to still allow a regular ADU. But for those that have already built an ADU, would they allow them to still build another ADU on top of that if they're using that for vacation rental? I think our our argument would be. Very similar to what I heard from from um council member Derris is that, well, what if that property owner decides to no longer use that as a. Vacation rental, went and changed his ownership and now they have two. Or three ADUs. I, that that creates an interesting problem.
So just questions we don't have answers to yet. Uh, I think you mentioned with regards to the JADU, I you you had said that owner occupancy is required or recommended. Because I read through this and I thought I at first saw that with a JADU, one or the other, the main unit or the J. Do you has to be owner occupied and then I couldn't find it again. So.
Required. So the state code now requires that JDUs are owner occupied.
So either the main unit or the JAUD, do JADU would be owner occupied, one or the other.
That the property is owner occupied, whether the property owner decides to live in the JADU or the house.
Or the main unit, but if you have a main unit and an ADU, neither one than, one of them has to be owner occupied.
That's right. At least through twenty twenty-five.
Okay, that's that. I want to make sure my understanding is correct.
Yeah.
You talked about if uh with that four foot setback, uh, because of our code and, you know, fire issues that that. You know, wall facing, but another a neighbor would require. Is that a greater expense or is it simply we're saying it's a stucco wall that someone's going to be staring at? And this makes it even a little bit more challenging because now not only are we on top of neighbors, but the neighbors may be just looking at a blank wall and nothing. Particularly attractive.
That that's correct. I suppose that's better than having a large window there overlooking into the yard, but essentially. You know, and our our architect on the council can weigh in on this as well too, but essentially it would have to be fire-rated construction, which means no openings. Um, no eaves, no projections. And that would have to be either, you know, some kind of fire-rated wall, whether it's hardy plank siding. Whether it's stucco, whether it's concrete, whether it's a block wall, um, something that's fire-rated without openings.
What is, if they moved it in a foot, they wouldn't have to do that.
Uh, it'd have to be still, anything that's five feet or closer typically has to comply with that, so.
Okay, so five and five feet, one inch, they don't have to meet that. I'm just asking.
I believe that's, I believe that's the scenario.
And so then the.
And maybe council member Derris can weigh in.
Well, I I don't, I don't need to know specifics of construction. I'm just, I'm asking the question because now I'm wondering with the. Uh, plans that we're building, the stock plans, does it account for that or can any stock plan you have just automatically accommodate something like that?
They could easily be modified to create fire-rated construction on on those sides, but what we'll probably do with these stock plans is we'll have. Versions and modifications that do address this minimal setback. So that you do have fire-rated walls that are designed to be that way while still having good design and articulation. Um, and the key is is um is to have, you know, perhaps areas that step back. So you can have design articulation, areas that step back outside of that, that five-foot uh zone. So that you can have an opening or you can have um variation in wall.
Okay.
So we can have design parameters like that. As long as we allow part of that building to be four foot, we can have other parts of that building do different things for design features. We can put those provisions into our code.
Yeah, I'm thinking to the extent it can be. Like certainly there's the, you know, attractiveness for the people who, you know, who whoever is putting in the ADU. But to the extent, you know, if we're putting these, you know, virtually up against a fence is is I'm sure how it would feel to a neighbor.
Yes.
That we're, we're making it, we're making it possible within what we're doing because our purpose in doing this and then, you know, thank you director. Cause you know, we're really taking the lead in the county with that reap grant uh in putting together those stock plans. So we want it to be less expensive for people, but in at the same time, um, if it can. You know, if we can, I I guess we're trying to please everybody with a stock plan, but that's, I'll I'll leave it there. Okay, that's. Are you sa- um, let's go to the multifamily with CCNRs, plan development. Are you saying that if we wanted to change that, you know, down the road, that you would need to change? One, the plan development, which you would have to get, you know, probably buy-in from the. The residents and you'd also have to change, they would also have to change their CCNRs, like both would need to be changed?
So there's two things. Um, typically on a plan development, we have what's called a master plan of development, which.
Right.
Essentially layers at all their improvements. It shows their driveways and landscaping. Um. Our interpretation is that they would have to amend that master plan of development to accommodate the changes to the overall plan development. They wouldn't have, and then they would actually have to get, if they're in multifamily zone, they'd have to get the CCNRs to accommodate. The ADU, but if CCNRs don't prohibit the ADU. It might just be okay.
So CCNRs prohibit the ADU, they would have to change those and we would also have to look at changing the.
Yeah, so they have to get all the other owner buy-in in order to change that if it's already prohibited.
Okay. Uh, in the the discussion of substandard, does that include? Let's say somebody, let's say somebody bought a house in nineteen ninety and there was an ADU on it and they come to find out later it was never permitted. And so I think we have a lot of those throughout the city where people have unpermitted ADUs. Is that considered a substandard, even if there's no health and safety issue?
It is. And so what this code says is they have to come into the city. They do have to submit a building permit application. But in exchange, we have to give them time to fix the issues if there's issues. So if they have to bring in compliance, they have to say. Oh, gosh, you built your ceiling too low. You know, you didn't build the right setback, you know, this is wrong here, this is wrong there, but. In general, it looks pretty safe. I think you're gonna be okay. We have to let them take five years to fix it. If we go out there and say, you know what? That plumbing's not safe, that electrical's not safe, and where you built this unit's not safe, we don't have to allow for that.
A ADU be within an ADU? Or does it have to be within the main residence?
I haven't heard that question. I've heard a lot of questions. But I don't know on that one. I don't think you can do an ADU within an ADU, but um.
Okay.
So.
Okay, I just have um two other, two other topics. One, um, I think it was council member Derris brought up. The sixty-day agreement and if we could have that, you know, while it's just with the city and you explain. Uh, the challenges and that might have to be within an agreement. And I'm wondering. Could we put together like a template for an agreement that if somebody came in and wanted to sign that agreement, they could? Because then would that limit issues later? Cause it, cause you seem to say it could be end up being expensive if they have to apply for extensions and do some things. Is there a way to, I mean, cause you know how it is with so many homeowners who this is the first time they've done anything. And they don't always know who to hire or. You know, they might know who to hire, but they're trying to get their brother-in-law who does some, you know, and and it doesn't always go according to plan. Uh, is there a way to kind of preempt some of that if they are open to it and applicant?
In exactly, and we've heard, we need to talk to our our um. Legal team about it, that there could be. Um, an agreement that they sign, that they agree to allow the process to extend beyond the state mandated sixty days. And that the city and the applicant signed to that. To allow them that additional time to prepare their plans. Or amend their plans in response to the city's comments.
It just seems like if we had some sort of a template, we could go with it every single time something happens, we don't have to draft a new agreement, but we have.
Yeah, I think other cities are already doing this because they're realizing that. You know, our our first plan check process may take four or five weeks and then all of a sudden they get these comments. And they're going, they're going, oh, my gosh, you know, I have to get an engineer to evaluate my septic system. I have to change my. My trusses and I have to change my plumbing plan. I can't get my dress person to redo this. For another three weeks and then by the time they turn it in, it's already sixty days. We don't want that to be the case, but that's that's reality. So um, yeah.
Then finally, a couple of my colleagues were asking about how many people have come in, uh, with regards to, you know, the new ADU uh, rules. And have we actually approved, excuse me, approved any that are on, under an acre and not on sewer?
Yes, we have. And because of the fact that when this code first came out, we were left thinking that our entire code was null and void and we had to do that. We did that. Uh, still requiring them to do engineering analysis
Okay.
on their site, uh, to demonstrate that they could accommodate the additional bedrooms. Um, and that has been, it has been done. But before we get into doing that, um, it's only been, you know, one or two. But before we get into doing that on a broader scale, if we were to say, okay, let's, let's not have a lot size minimum. There are the regional implications to think about, um, in these areas where we have these concentrations of smaller lots.
Yeah. As a city, we have spent a lot of time and a lot of money uh, to put together our local area management plan to protect, um, the, protect the water supply and to make sure that our residents, um, can, can still safely use septic and not have it, you know, cost, you know, exponentially, you know, more than it does based upon what some of the state, you know, standard rules were. We've put a lot into that. And I'm, I'm sure we don't want to put that at risk. So, um, I think that is a big topic of conversation. All right. Uh, any other questions before we, I think I'll take a break before we go to public comment. But are there any other council questions before we do that? Seeing none. Um, it is 7:52. How about we come back at eight o'clock? And we will go to public comment at that time. All right. Hey, we're at eight o'clock, so we can get started again. Let me say something so I know my speakers are working.
Hello?
Oh, good. Thank you. Everybody comes back on and they're on mute. And I'm like, did something happen while I was gone? All right.
We can.
Everybody looks frozen.
Oh, great. Yeah, let's see, Councilmember Derris. We've got our center, city manager coming on. That's never a good sign.
Just letting you know I'm here.
Excellent. Thank you. I always take that as we're doing something wrong. Means to, needs to set us straight.
No, that, that's when the city attorney comes on.
Well, there's that too. All right. So, uh, we are back from a brief, uh, break. And we are going to go to public comment here on our, uh, uh, management report C1 on the ADU issue. And so I'm going to go to, if you're in the webinar, feel free to raise your hand. And if you're on the phone, you can press star nine. And, uh, when you come on, just tell, tell us your name for the record and you will have three minutes. Uh, we have, um, Brighton Hushing Klein. Sir, you are.
Hello, uh, I'm Brighton Hushing Klein, as stated. And unfortunately, Councilman Borbo, I am one of those people who is harassing Phil about putting in an ADU on his property. Now, the problem is, as Phil pointed out, there is an issue with the, uh, plan development overlay. I have the unique pleasure of being placed in plan development overlay number seven, which is, as far as I'm able to determine, and I'm sure Phil can correct me on this, seems to be an omnibus overlay for any, uh, multifamily residential zones. Which means that the, uh, way of solving my problem and obtaining an ADU by modifying the plan development wouldn't be an option for me unless I was prepared to inconvenience a tremendous number of other people. Now, um, the thing is that this is not an issue of an ADU that's not approved by anyone. It's something, there is not unapproved. It's wanted by us. It's approved by my HOA. Uh, I've gone to, you know, my neighbors and this is a thing that's approved locally and by the HOA and by the state. But by the way that our plan development overlay zone and the master plan interacts, it makes it unable for me to take advantage of any of the ADU. Now, I'm not asking, as a matter of fact, I'm asking the exact opposite of irritating other people by placing an ADU on my property. What I'm asking for is for the city to look into the interaction between the plan development overlay zones and allowing individual HOAs and individual developments, which as a plan development overlay zone number seven, it's not tied to a specific area in the zoning map, unlike all of the other planned development overlay zones. What I'm asking for is for the city council, when they propose any modifications, to look into the necessary flexibility, which allows individual owners and individual areas to be bear, able to better set and decide for themselves whether, uh, the adoption of the modified ADU, even if they're in a planned development overlay zone, uh, is appropriate for them without having to reinvent the wheel as it was. Especially in a situation like mine, where doing so would not only put us out, but it would put a number of people who depend on this definition. Uh, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hushing Klein. Any other speakers? Please raise your hand. If you're on the phone, please press star nine. Do we have any callers on the line right now?
We have one caller calling in. I assume they're going to want to talk about this item.
Okay. Well, I see while we're waiting for that caller, I see Mr. Eric Madsen.
Hi. Yeah, my name is Eric Madsen. Um, I guess it had a question or just looking for clarification that, uh, so for, if you had an owner occupied home and you did possibly want to add an ADU type unit as a vacation rental, it seems like that's being like kind of discouraged for like lack of having, um, affordable housing available. But if you're like going to live there forever and you just want to add an extra thing on the property, if you have enough space and it accommodates and everything, is that going to be a possibility?
So ask your questions. We'll take all the questions and things and then we will address that later. So what I'm hearing is you want to know, you know, is there the option at some point to do a vacation rental or is that completely going away? Is that your question?
Yeah, essentially.
Okay. Anything else that you wanted to comment on or any other questions?
Nope. That was very informative. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. And let's see, any questions, raise your hand or Luke, if we have someone on the phone and if you want to do, get the timer going. Um, when we bring someone on, that would be great.
Uh, the caller does not want to speak on this item, so no callers at this time.
Callers this time. All right. We still have a handful of folks here in our webinar. If you would like to speak, go ahead and raise your hand now. The council is so thorough that there are almost no questions. All right. Uh, last chance. I'm seeing none. I will go ahead and put, close public comment and bring it back to council. Um, and so, uh, we will certainly get into Mr. Hushing Klein's, um, comments with regards to the PD uh, overlay when we get to talking about that section. And, um, uh, Eric Madsen talked about owner occupied and vacation rentals. And, uh, that is one of the things we're going to be talking about tonight because certainly the state is they're, they're applying this code specifically to long-term rentals because they are wanting, they are seeing this as a way to help, a, a tool to help solve the shortage of housing in our state. Uh, and so they are not, uh, inclined to, you know, move towards a vacation rental. And we will be here tonight talking about, um, do we allow vacation rentals? Um, what are the risks there, you know, with regards to the state or do we not moving forward? So that, uh, you are right on track with asking that question and we'll be having that conversation tonight. So with that, uh, Phil, why don't we start, um, we'll kind of go step by step. So really the first one is looking at minimum lot size for septic suitability and for fire concerns. And so let's start with, um, septic suitability. I think, um, you know, Councilmember Funk had brought up, you know, potentially doing maps. I had asked the city manager about that as well. And it seems like based on what you said tonight and, and what I heard her say is that could be a little bit challenging. And i- it's possible that our safest route, because that is what we're concerned with with septic, our safest route is to stick with the one acre. But then possibly have within their, you know, if you can do a so, so, an, an engineer's report and all of that and show that you can accommodate it and there is no degradation of the groundwater and, and all the different issues that they would have to look at, then we could potentially allow that with that type of report. Is that, are we understanding that correct?
That's right. Yes. That's probably the path of least resistance to go in that way. Um, if we adopt a map, the thing about the map is conditions change over time. More properties may become hooked up to sewer as we move forward in time. We upgrade our waste park or feed and plant. There are additional areas in the city that will be linked to sewer. And then we have to keep amending our maps in order to, to meet that. But if we simply adopt criteria, tie it to lot size, tie it to the regional board standards. Um, but perhaps consider allowing an exception, um, for certain areas in the city if they provide that engineering analysis. Um, that's a possibility. But it is also true that, you know, almost anything can be engineered on, on a site specific thing. The bigger issue really is the cumulative impact of having these smaller lots. And that is where I think our staff recommendation initially was to really just stick to a lot size. Because if we do say, okay, an engineer can figure this out. You can engineer almost anything. You really can. And if we want to go that way, we could do that. But is, if we get a multiple series of lots in a cluster that decide to do that at, at some point in the future, that's where we might run into problems. We could also develop code that gets us around that to say that, hey, if you're in this neighborhood, you may be able to engineer a system, but you're the only one that gets to do that. So there's challenges to that. It becomes, it becomes a little complex. Once we start going down that. So there's challenges to that. It becomes, it becomes a little complex. Once we start going down that path, it does open up other considerations that we need to think about.
Okay, first one gets it. Yeah, I mean, I am, I want to hear from my colleagues. I am inclined, I think, like I said, we put a lot of time and investment into this and it's, it's, I think imperative that we protect our groundwater, we protect the ability to have septic because we have a large number. I mean, we have thousands of residents who are on septic and I think it's important that we maintain the integrity of that system. But I would like to hear from my colleagues. I see Councilmember Borbo has his hand.
Yes, thank you. Um, I just want to make sure I understand something from Mr. Dunsmore. In terms of the advantage of having, you know, saying a one acre minimum and, you know, but you could do it on a smaller thing if you can demonstrate it's, you know, that it works. What's the advantage of the one acre minimum? Is it that we're going to save them, save a landowner or property owner time and money by saying that they, you know, they can do it if they're on one acre? The reason I asked the question is I'm, you know, one acre on the side of a hill is probably less suitable for a septic system than a half acre of flat ground. I would assume. But so I'm trying to understand what the advantages of using the, you know, establishing a standard of an acre minimum versus the standard of if you can do it, you know, if you can make it work, you know, you can make it work. And if I understand correctly, our lamp, our local area management plan that allows us to still approve septic systems without property owner having to go to the regional water quality board, it already has, you know, criteria, including maybe the one acre minimum, but I'm trying to understand what's the advantage of, of the one acre minimum?
Well, the first and foremost advantage is having clear and consistent policies that everyone can easily understand. Now, I will say that even within a one acre site, you're going to have to do engineering to determine your septic suitability. You're right. If you have a very sloped site covered in trees and you have a system that's only designed to accommodate your existing house, you're going to have to hire an engineer to figure some things out and it may or may not work even with that on one acre site. So it doesn't always eliminate that engineering possibility. I think what we're saying is if you get two and three units on every site that's half acre, it's a very, you know, you could actually do it. You can design it. I think you can engineer it. It's the long-term impact on the entire groundwater basin over a 20, 30, 40-year period. As we begin to see the other state mandates that have come down the pipeline right now, like SB9, SB10, the urban lot, urban subdivision standards, these things that, that really are, are essentially trying to streamline more and more housing on a community like ours where we're very rural and we don't have a lot of services. It's, it's challenging. So it might be to our benefit to look at being a little more conservative on the get-go and see how this goes over a few years. And we can always amend the code later on if we, if we find that we're just not producing enough ADUs and we need to be a little more flexible. But again, it opens up a can of worms as well. Might falsely give someone hope and they spend a lot of money and we deal with some repercussions of them being frustrated with our team or frustrated with their engineering team after spending this money and realizing that it, you know, they can do a system, but it's going to be really expensive to do. But it's primarily the regional discussion. It's not this, this case-by-case site discussion. Because you could do a system that's going to work, whether you put in pre-treatment, whether you do a different type of system. You can make a lot of things work from a septic system. It's just, do you want, can you accommodate that on multiple properties?
And who, as you've identified, you've stated multiple times that, you know, it becomes more of an issue if numerous people in a given area put septic systems on lots smaller than an acre. Who, and you talk about nitrogen loading, who's monitoring that? So let's say you have an area, you know, like River Garden or some, maybe not something so currently densely occupied, but you know, a bunch of people put in ADUs and each one individually meets the criteria. And then after 10 years, you got 30 of them in this area. Is somebody testing something periodically to say, aha, you know, we're getting to a point where, you know, we can't do this anymore. And I, I'm wondering about that because I'm I mean, I would tend to agree with the nurse comment that first come, first served, you know, you don't cut everybody off because of a potential problem in the future. But you might have to cut people off when, when you, you know, reach a problem state.
We're not monitoring that to that extent, other than the fact that a task area major water company monitors groundwater in our basins. But what we're doing is, in this particular scenario, we did hire a consultant to evaluate the potential of certain areas developing ADUs and not hooking to sewer. And we did map certain areas such as River Gardens, such as areas around Portola, such as areas south of Pine Mountain and a couple of other areas in the city where it would become a problem on these sites that are clustered together, that are much smaller than acre. If we were to allow ADUs on those sites, multiple ADUs on those sites, we would have a problem. So it's scientifically been proven that there's an issue, but we haven't monitored the groundwater conditions and soil types change everywhere. It might be more of a problem for somewhere that has sandy lot, sandy soils, and you've got a faster saturation rate closer to a groundwater source as compared to something that's in a whole different area that has heavy clay soils and you have a slow percolation and you don't have direct influence on groundwater. It changes all over. So yeah, it becomes a more complex situation to evaluate. But in general, our consultant came back with a recommendation very similar to the original regional water recommendation, which says that in general, it takes about a half an acre to support a dwelling unit on septic to avoid having a concentration issue of nitrates in your community.
Okay. Well, thank you for that answer. Yeah, I'm, because I mean, I the state wants us to do this, obviously, to allow more ADUs. And I'm not trying to get in the way of anybody, you know, who wants to build an ADU in a appropriate circumstance. So I'm, I'm inclined to not make it too horribly restrictive, restrictive relative to a minimum lot size. But yeah, I mean, if, if you think that's the best way to accomplish it, but still leave room for people who have smaller sizes, you know, who can demonstrate they can meet the, the septic requirements. You know, then I'm, I'm okay with that. With using the one acre minimum as a guide, essentially.
Yeah, we started with one acre and then we had two criteria they had to meet to go smaller. One of those criteria being onsite investigation determined they can fit the system. And secondly, that they're not going to impact the region basin in terms of where their proximity is to other, other lots and other ADUs. That would be a logical conclusion.
And just to be clear. Okay, go ahead. I was going to ask because I've seen our city manager pop on this discussion and of course, our public works director, and I thought that possibly they had something to lend to this conversation.
Exactly.
I, I really just wanted to turn it over to Nick a little bit. Right now, anybody that hooks up to a septic system, any dwelling unit at all, does have to go through our lamp process. So we do have things in place that regardless of lot size, we do have parcels in town where they may be two, three acres with just a single unit and having a very difficult time placing a septic system. So we have protections in place for those. What we're trying to do is get that word out on how difficult they may be. There are some systems that have very little impact to nitrogen loading overall, but they're very expensive. And so Nick, if you could talk to that really quick.
Yeah, sure. So one of the things that we really wanted to do the lamp for is to, to have some design options other than just what the state standards were. And, you know, we really are able to do that. There's, and one of these ways is to have alternative septic systems that really overcomes site constraints. And the, that, that other conventional, you know, septic systems like the traditional tank and leach field have. But they, they can do a lot. It's pre-treatment. Like Phil said earlier, you can pretty much engineer anything, but if you have a site that's a, you know, too steep or you have high groundwater or if you have, you know, other site constraints that limit the use of a conventional septic system. There's ways you can do that. These alternatives onsite wastewater treatment systems, they actually have to be approved by the water board. And the folks that have them also have to have a permit with the water board, just like the city has a permit, you know, for a wastewater treatment plant, just on a smaller scale. But they can really knock down a lot of the BOD, you know, biological oxygen demand, the strength of it, total suspended solids, nitrates, all those things. So, I mean, there is a way that you could do it on a smaller lot. But again, I think that's kind of, I think for the planning and helping out with the ADU discussion, it is good to have a rule of thumb, I think, on a lot of these. But, you know, somebody wanted to demonstrate that they could engineer a system on a certain site. You know, we have, the lamp will cover all those aspects. So we always can fall back on the plan.
And so Director DeBarre, that when you say we can always fall back on the lamp, let's say somebody comes in with, you know, 0.7 acres, whatever. And as Director Dunsmore said, you can engineer anything, but how does it affect the overall system? What I'm hearing from you is that our lamp does address the overall system. So any individual applicant would have to go through lamp if, if dealing with septic and it would answer that question then that we would be concerned about.
It would. And I think one of the reasons we're, we're having this discussion tonight is kind of the overall policies and goals for the city to, you know, have, you know, mackerely or comprehensively, you know, not overwhelm the groundwater system with nitrates. So, I mean, this is kind of what we're, we're after and you know, it's not like every single property is going to have an ADU on it, I hope. You know, at some point in the future, but, you know, there might, I think the ones we're really looking at are the ones that are smaller, you know, less than an acre. And they're going to have to demonstrate that they can fit that, you know, system on their, their site. So even if they wanted to come in and, and try to get that, there's still, you know, safeguards in place to, to protect groundwater quality. And a lot, and one thing I might mention, I'm not sure if Phil mentioned or not, but a lot of these areas that are on the smaller lots that we're talking about that might restrict ADUs that don't, are not connected to the sewer right now, a lot of these areas are in those five areas that we have identified for potential future sewer expansion areas. And Phil, I don't remember what it was, but it was like about 90% or more of those, those properties that we're talking about that would be affected if it was an acre or less would be covered by those future sewer extension areas.
Exactly. One thing about the lamp, Nick, I should mention, maybe it is a good question for you. I don't know that it looked at this more regional aspect of having a series of small lots with multiple units on them, on onsite wastewater systems. It looked at them on a case-by-case basis, I believe. And so that's this other concern I think I'm trying to elaborate on is, is the multiplier effect. And I, I don't know the lamp went there. It did certainly look at design standards, but didn't look at the concentration or, or nitrogen level issues with these areas that we do propose to hook up to the system eventually at some point. And that's why we're doing that because they're already undersized to really continue into the future under the standards expected by regional board.
Yeah, that is correct. I mean, the, the lamp was really site-specific. It wasn't really, you know, citywide specific. So I think that's kind of the difference between the two policies that we're talking about.
Councilmember Funk. Or let me ask Councilmember Borbo, were you complete?
Well, I, I was, but now they created a question in my mind. That being said, what the city manager said and Nick, what you said regarding that essentially, anybody who comes in on an unsued lot, wants to build an ADU, they already have to go through the lamp process. So it kind of goes back in my mind, it's struggling to understand what's the advantage of having the one acre minimum. If, if everybody, regardless of whether I got a half acre, acre and a half, I'm going to have to go through the lamp process to build an ADU. What's the advantage of, of putting the acre, acre minimum on there?
I think back to having just an easy to understand code that is clear and it ties back to criteria that's generalized for accommodating a large number of these units in our city in the future that aren't hooked to sewer. But I think the flexibility is, is still there. We can, we can add flexibility to this code to allow case-by-cases examination of, of sites. If the council prefers to, to go less than one acre, that flexibility is certainly there. It is feasible.
Yeah, it's, it's really got to do with the, you know,
Thank you.
cumulative nitrogen loading in the city, you know, in those areas and just making sure that we don't have hotspots, I guess, with nitrogen.
How would we know that? How do we, like Councilmember Borbo had said, you know, the water company certainly tests for things, but how do you know something is going to be a problem before it becomes a problem? Because we don't want to, you know, approve all of these ADUs and then be in a position of saying, oh, now we have a problem. We want to know before we get there. So we would, you know, we would prevent the problem from happening. And it doesn't sound like there is a system or mechanism to be able to do that.
Let me just jump in really quick. There probably is not a nice, clean, bright line. Our consultant did identify some areas that we already know are problems, septic system areas that we know we're going to have nitrogen loading problems because we already have some nitrogen loading problems in River Gardens, by Portola, in some of those areas on Spaghetti Hill that we identified in our lamp that we eventually want to sewer. So those areas are known. Other areas are certainly suspect as you have a lot of small lots. We can look at the soils, the engineers can look at some of those things and determine whether it's likely we would eventually have a soil loading. If I have a one acre parcel or 0.9 acre parcel on the west side and everybody around me is five acres, just on the face of it, walking in, probably nitrogen loading isn't my, isn't going to be a huge problem because there's not a concentration there. That's a very simplistic thing. But as we, as things build out, as SB9 gets into effect, as other things, we, we have to reevaluate those as we go. This isn't going to be an exact thing. But we can put some general things in place and protections in place that allows some flexibility. Certainly tonight, we're just getting general direction and we're hearing what the concerns are and which way you'd like to go. And what we'll do is we'll work with the consultants. We'll work with the legal team to try and get something that shows that we're adhering to the state, that we're trying to meet their objectives. But still protecting our groundwater is kind of what I'm hearing so far.
Councilmember Funk followed by Councilmember Derris.
Sure. I think, see, this is a matter of balancing a number of things. We want to make sure that we protect our groundwater. We want to give people as much flexibility as we can within that to do things that they want with their properties. We also want to make sure that we don't create unrealistic expectations. I mean, that's, that's part of the issue of, of having, from my mind, of having a, a clear line is if 99% of the people that have less than an acre are going to have one of these problems and they're going to have to spend $30,000 to figure out they can't do this. This is a lot of really unhappy constituents. It's a lot of time that staff spends working with people who can't do what they want to do. And it also means that we have people coming into the community who have unrealistic expectations when they're purchasing properties. And that gets I know, all kinds of animus going and causes, leads people down the path of spending a lot of money that doesn't get them what they were trying to do. And, and to the extent to which we can help make it clear to people that, that what they said. that, that what they, what these issues might be. It either, you know, I, I, I would be willing to consider something where we, we left an option open for under one acre properties. If that's going to be manageable under the, the collective impact of, that we see with the lamp. But I, I would want us to be, only do that if we can be really clear about now that, you know, the, the tripwire. So if you're, you know, more than an acre, you know, X, if you're less than an acre, you have, and the, you know, average size of the properties that touch yours is X, then you're going to have to do a study. And these typically cost, you know, this is a thirty thousand dollar issue or a three thousand dollar issue. You know, give people some guidelines about that. So that they have, you know, red flag, you're getting into a lot of money quick. Because you're going to have to do this. And then, of course, if you're not on septic, if you're on sewer, then you have a lot more flexibility.
I, Councilmember Daraes, followed by Mayor Protim Newsom.
Yeah, actually, my question was kind of outside the scope here. We can talk about it another time. It doesn't matter, so.
Thank you for that. Mayor Protim Newsom.
Mine's not a question. I think mine's more of a comment. I think based on staff recommendations that we need to be conservative first time out and not be modifying on a one-on basis, since we seem to already have some type of issue, I'd be more, rather, I would prefer to be more conservative. And then we can adjust it later on, once we evaluate how the ADUs roll out.
Okay.
Mayor, if I could throw a more comment out on this topic. And that's the distinction, I think I forgot to really emphasize this, distinction between gross versus net. And one of the suggestions I think we put out there is, is to use a gross calculation versus net calculation, which is currently in our code, if we do decide to go with a, a lot size minimum. And that's a big difference, because for a lot that may be point seven five or point eight acres, they would still be in this acre criteria, because they can use their roadway away. They can use easements, and they can use all these, roadway ways cut away a lot of land. You know, my own property is like point eight, nine acres or something, but if I included my roadway rate, I'm at one point two, and that, that's a big difference, too. It allows for us to use that space differently. Just, just wanted to throw that last caveat out there.
Yeah, you didn't help any, I think.
Sorry.
I, I think the biggest issue, as you know, a, a lot of us have said, is like, number one, protect groundwater. Two, we want to be flexible if we can, but what I'm hearing in being flexible, it starts sounding very confusing. We're likely to tick a lot of people off, we're likely to take a lot of time and end up giving answers that people don't want. I mean, do we think that, you know, in this, this estimate of, say, potentially thirty a year, do we assume that ten a year could potentially be on these kind of lots and could meet those requirements? Or would we have ten, twenty, thirty people a year coming in to try to do this, and maybe one of them can, and you get twenty-nine people that walk away going, great, I'm at forty grand? And they're, to Councilmember Funk's point, they're pretty ticked off, and they think we don't know what we're doing, and we're hard to work with. And, you know, they're unhappy with, you know, for good reason, I could understand that. But that, that is a, that is a real concern. And so I would be more tempted to go with Mayor Protim Newsom's point on, let's start out the gate a little more conservative and go with that acre, particularly if we know those problem areas. Now, if it's simple and easy and clear to say, these areas, you know, like, say, our city manager mentioned, that, you know, clearly you can look and say there are five acre lots, and if you happen to have this small one, like, you can clearly see this isn't going to be an issue. If there's enough of those and we can, and it makes sense to do that, I'm open to that. But then again, do you, how do you differentiate that in the code? If you live here, if you live here, is someone going to know to look for that when they're prospecting or simply wanting to try to build on their, on their property? Uh, Councilmember Borbo.
Yes, thank you. I'm, I'm trying to understand, though, the difference of, so let's say I, I own, let's say we do an acre minimum gross instead of net. But we allow, you know, if, on smaller, we allow it on smaller lots, if you can prove it'll work. So, two different owners. One has an acre and a half, they come in. Hey, I've got more than an acre, I should be able to do this. And it's like, yes, you should be able to do it, but you still got to meet the lamp criteria. You know, your system still has to meet all the criteria in the lamp. Versus the, the other person comes in, they got three quarters of an acre. And it's like, well, you probably, you may not be able to do this, but if you can meet the lamp criteria, you can do it. What's the difference? Other than the potential, the perceived, when I walked in the door and I had more than an acre, I felt pretty confident. And then when I walked in the door and had three quarters of an acre, I didn't feel confident.
I think part of, in my mind, that we have a certain standard. So we know that, okay, if every you know, property that could do something, did something, we have a sense within our lamp, and, 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 and tell me if this, if this is correct, Mr. DeBarre, and I could be off on this, but that we know, here's what the capacity is, you know, overall for nitrogen loading, all of that. So here we've set these standards. Now we're going to change that and say, okay, there's a bunch more folks that could come in, particularly in these problem areas. Right now, folks in those problem areas probably can't expand based on our current code, but you cut it down, but you remove that. You remove that one acre minimum. Then you're sitting here and an engineer comes and says, oh yeah, we can engineer and make that work. They put in the money, make it work, but they're not looking at the overall loading of the system regionally. That's the issue. It doesn't, it doesn't take a regional look. It's just this particular property.
No, that's, that's totally right on there. The, the recommendations with the one acre minimum are really best management practices for the, I guess, overall, or maybe you could say regional loading for nitrogen in our town. Where the lamp really looks at site-specific or parcel-specific criteria on how to fit those onsite wastewater treatment systems onto that site, and, you know, distance from groundwater and all those other things. So really, the nitrogen loading is kind of more regional best management practices. So I think that's really going after, like, you know, protecting groundwater. You know, and I think I can also speak for Phil and his staff, because I've been down at the front counter and people come in and say, hey, you know, I'm looking, I just bought this parcel. You know, I was told I could do this by the seller, and, you know, or whatever else, and they can't, you know, so I think having some clear direction, as Councilmember Funk mentioned as well, you know, with people coming in or prospectors or whatever else, having a clear game plan for them, and then also for staff to, to provide feedback. Because a lot of these folks come in and they haven't done any testing on the site. They don't know what kind of soils they have. They don't have any of that, how deep groundwater is. So it's, it's a bit of a risk, and I think this maybe kind of takes some of that risk out. I don't know if that makes sense or not, but.
I think that it does, and I would just ask overall, again, we're just giving direction. So there are a couple of us that would like to stick with that one acre minimum. I think some of you are kind of wondering, do we, Councilmember Daraes, you didn't, you hadn't really chimed in on this. Can you let us know where your, what your point of view is?
I'm comfortable with the way staff has it figured out. I think the one acre minimum is fine. I think what Ms. Newsom said, Councilmember Newsom, be conservative now and adjust it later as needed, but I'm, I'm comfortable with the way it is now, the way it's crafted in the report.
Uh, Councilmember Funk?
Yeah, I'm, I'm comfortable with that, too. I think if we're going to craft an exception, it should be something that can be defined easily by, say, the, the average size of the, the, the properties that touch your property. Something of that sort. If there's an exception that can be crafted there that's easy to define, so that folks can figure out pretty quick what it, what it is without doing a big study. And I know, and doesn't get us in, and, and can easily identify some properties where you wouldn't have a neighborhood or collective loading problem, then I'd be willing to consider that kind of an exception. If you can't do that, I don't think we want to get too broad in the exception. Let's keep it simple and keep the one acre minimum.
Councilmember Borbo?
I must be missing something. I'm just not understanding how this helps. And I understand that the conversation about the regional impact, but we're still talking about what an individual property owner can or can't do. And I'm not sure how this way of doing it with, I mean, are we, are we going to say, okay, you got less acre, you, you can't do it? Are we saying, I mean, I follow what Councilmember Funk's saying about the average size of neighboring parcels. But are, I mean, I, I guess I'm concerned that we're going to leave some people out based on a rigid criteria, when it really all boils down to whether or not they can comply with the terms of the lamp.
Councilmember, Councilmember Bor, you, you're probably right on that. I think our point is, right now, let's, let's take this slowly. If we say, if we change this and we say, okay, it all goes, and as long as you meet the lamp, and then you start getting properties in some of those problem areas that start putting in septics, because they can prove their one, their, you know, their, their lot is just fine. But suddenly you get a, a confluence of those that then develops this big problem. And then we do, as one of our directors said, turn into lozosos. We don't want to have, and not to throw lozosos under the bus, but we don't want to have a, a problem because we're not managing it well. And I think with SB nine happening, and suddenly you can start getting lots split, this is going to become an even bigger problem. And if we go too far right out of the gate, my concern is this could really, it could just really start going downhill from here. Councilmember Daraes?
Yeah, you know, Nick, maybe you can explain a little bit with the lamp, because I think this is part of the setbacks for the, the septic system. How far apart do septic systems have to be? And is there a setback distance that a septic system, the leach field or whatnot, from, from the property line? Because if your, if your site is too small, you're not going to be able to put a septic system on it. So the one acre, I, I don't know if that's really, I'm probably, obviously, that's a comfortable size to have. But you're not going to keep splitting it, splitting it, splitting it, because eventually you're going to be too small, you're not going to have a septic system. But if you can address that, Nick, I'd appreciate that.
Yeah, and I don't, I've got to look up in the lamp here. I can, I can tell you in a second what the subjects are from the property line, but they're not real far, actually. Believe it or not, I think they're like ten feet or something like that. I'll find out for sure, though. But I think, I think you're, you're right, Councilmember Daraes, is that you know, there's, not only do you have to fit you know, two lamps, if you do an ADU, you know, you have to accommodate for that, and it's almost like a second unit. So you have to have two systems, or you have to expand your system twice as much. But you also have to have that future expansion area. When that leach field fails, you need to identify on your site a hundred percent of what that leach field, where you're going to, where that future leach field is going to be. So you have to reserve that area, you know, for when the leach field fails in fifty years or whatever it might be. So you kind of think about that, how big one acre is, and then you're also taking up land space with structures and parking lots or driveways, sorry. And it got scobbled up pretty quickly. And I think the one thing, you know, to Councilmember Borbo's, you know, saying is, the lamp does not really address the, the over-concentration of nitrogen in the city. So it only really looks at that parcel, and if you can fit, you know, leach fields on and you know, the systems on each, each parcel. But it really doesn't look at that in a comprehensive way like the one acre minimum we do.
Ultimately, what we're saying is that one acre minimum has been set, as you have said, best stand, best practices. And if we don't maintain that, then a look at the overall system has kind of been thrown out the window.
That's correct. It's really, really best management practice based on, I believe, fifty pounds per acre loading of nitrogen.
Okay, so we, we, we spent a bit of time on this. What I'd like to do, it seems that we have a general consensus, like, let's go with the one acre minimum for now. And, you know, as Councilmember Funk had said, you know, if, if staff is looking through this and sees an exception that can be easily crafted and easily understood, so that not every property owner is looking and saying, oh, looky, there's a way for me to do this. We don't want to create that confusion. If you do see a way to easily do that, we would be open to that. Is that, do we have sort of an overall consensus? I know Councilmember Borbo, you're still a little iffy on that, but I would like to move us along, because I don't know that we're going to get any closer on this tonight.
Right, we need to move along, and you're right, I, I'll live with that.
All right, so let's move on to the issue of fire safety, fire concerns. Thoughts on this? Councilmember Funk?
Yeah, I, I think we're, we are getting into a very dangerous position if we expand ADUs in areas that are in high fire risk, where there's only one way out. We are trying to, right now, the city's working on with the Zone Haven approach, the traffic study, to look at how do we evacuate people from there? But we have, we already have, will have to deal with the impact where communities that neighborhoods where people live close to the freeway are going to be asked not to evacuate, so, you know, in, so that folks who are further upstream can get out and not be stuck in, in overrun. And I don't think we want to add more units to those areas. That there, there's impact for the people who don't know that they're getting into risks. There's impact on the ability of communities downhill from them to also be able to get out safely.
So my, my thought is that, and Director asked me if this would be sufficient direction if the council agreed with this, is that we really want the input from our fire chief and the, and the experts who are able to look at this and say, you know, okay, there, there could be some areas where, yes, we can accommodate those ADUs safely. There's, you know, multiple ways out, all of that. But here's some others where, no, there's one way in and out. There's, you know, challenges that would put people's lives at risk, and we need to to say no in these areas. So would that be sufficient direction that we would leave that to to fire person, to fire safety experts to bring that back to us?
Yes, that, that is adequate. In fact, we've already mapped a number of areas in the city in our wild and urban interface, and in our very high fire zones that, you know, may be deficient in their road access, and our fire team, our chief, will be able to weigh in on that topic as we develop the code.
Okay. So is there any other specific direction from council members beyond that?
No.
Councilmember Borbo?
Yeah, I'd want to comment on that. I mean, you know, we have a lot of unique situations in our city, and, you know, when we talk about these high fires area, high fire risk areas, we're talking primarily on the west side. You know, we have roads that are dead end and have three houses on them. You know, and they're only dead end for, you know, a quarter mile. And you have others that, you know, might be one, a one-way in and out street that have forty homes on them, stretched out over a mile. So, you know, the, the potential to be trapped is much greater. When I was going over this report with the city manager this morning, I think she said that there's, the state may have a standard as to, you know, high fire severity in a number of homes. I would want the fire chief to address that, you know, because I don't want to say that, you know, three houses on a dead-end street that's five hundred feet long can't build an ADU. Because to me, what we're looking at is the ones that, you know, where you could have numerous, you know, twenty, thirty, forty, fifty homes stuck out on a long dead-end street. So I would want something to come back that would address not a blanket, you can't do this, but take more into consideration the, the kinds of circumstances we see in our city.
Output. All right, I think we have, am I seeing consensus on this?
Yeah.
Okay. I do, I see an attendee, a member of the public with your hand up. We have closed public comment, and I don't know if you mistakenly raised your hand, or if you were trying to chime in on something, but we did already have public comment. Thank you. Okay, the next one is owner occupancy requirements. And so, Phil, this would simply be, I mean, really, the only owner occupancy requirements, if, if, if there's a JADU and there has to be owner occupancy, we have no say on that. We have no say with ADU versus, so really, is there any input we can be giving you in particular?
Uh, there's not. I think that's already addressed by the state code.
Okay, I mean, I would say if it isn't. It would simply be that if there's a JADU. But I don't even, yeah, I mean, if it is addressed, then it seems like there's, there's no particular point. Councilmember Funk?
Just a question. If a property has both an JADU and an ADU. Can the owner live in the ADU and leave the main house and JADU as rentals?
As long as they live on the property is the way I understand it.
Okay.
So basically, whatever the state code is with that will abide by. All right, number three is the short-term rentals. And this really is the issue of, under the parameters. That the state is, you know, basically making it easy for ADUs to be built. Under those parameters, the state is saying you can build these, but they cannot be vacation rentals. And so Director, what you're asking us right now is, do we want to make it available? That, hey, if you don't want to come under this provision. Then you could go under, you know, our, our, our other code, our old code, or whatever we decide. And you could do a vacation rental and, you know, not get all the special perks. So that's kind of what you're asking us. Right now, or, you know, do we, because this is, there, there's a bigger vacation rental policy. Conversation that could be had, and that's not what we're doing here tonight. I know. Generally, that kind of informs the conversation, but the bigger piece does have to do with going forward and the, the ADUs that will be built. So is that, that's what you want to hear from us? Do we want to allow? Potential vacation rentals, knowing that the state could come back and say, okay, well, now you're going to put another one on there. And then you've got two ADUs, potentially a JD, JADU on a property and further impacting neighborhoods and all of that. Okay.
Yes, that's, that's one question. But the second question is also what to do with. Your existing ADU stock out there. That is using their ADU as a long-term rental. And then after we adopt this code, they decide, you know, I'd love to have a vacation rental. Can I convert that ADU to a vacation rental? I built it before you did your code. So there's a couple of different ways we can go with that. It seems that the state could be flexible on allowing us to allow older ADUs to convert to vacation rentals. But they're pretty strict on saying, hey, new ADUs built under this. Section. Could not be used as vacation rentals unless you built a some other unit. That's not really built to this particular code section, then it could be used as. So there's kind of two different scenarios. And we have a couple of different options there.
So let's deal with the existing ADUs and have that conversation. Councilmember Borbo.
Oh, you're referring to like ADUs that already exist, built prior to 2020. You know, a renter leaves and owner decides, hey, I'm going to turn this into a, you know, to an Airbnb or something. Under our current rules, they could do that, right? And there's nothing in this, in this that specifically addresses that. You're just expressing a concern that perhaps the state somewhere down. On the road and say, hey, that ADU that was a long-term rental became a short-term rental. And, you know, the state could change, you know, the game and say. You know, if, if you, a city allowed a long-term rental to become a short-term rental, you now you have to allow another unit. Couldn't you address that by? If you allowed somebody to open up and, you know, an Airbnb. Out of an old ADU. That it's subject to, you know, that any change in state law could negate their, their permit.
Sir, that, that's certainly an option. I think what we're asking the staff is, do we want to allow that to continue? Or do we not want to allow even? Existing ADUs to be vacation rentals? We have those options. The other option too, that, that we didn't really address in this too, the third thing we could mention is. And if the state does apparently allow is. That if someone does build a new ADU on their property and they don't use it for a vacation rental, but then they decide to turn their. Primary residence into a vacation rental. That appears to be legal as well. We don't have to address that in our code, but I'm just throwing it out.
I guess what I'm getting, the reason I'm asking the question is, I don't see that we necessarily, yeah, I don't see that we have to address that actually. You know, unless the state takes some subsequent, more drastic action, although I do think at some point in time, we do need to address short-term rentals in our city.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, so maybe the thought would be that we, we don't address that except to, and to your point, Councilmember Borbo. Have a provision in there that if the state changes later on, you're going to have to flip that back because we're not going to start adding multiple ADUs. Property. Councilmembers feel comfortable with that?
Yeah, I think that covers the existing ADUs. Were you thinking that also covers the situation where somebody? Wants to build an ADU and. Pay the impact fees, pay the sewer connection fees, pay the water connection fees, all the fees that are being waived to subsidize. Creation of more affordable housing. If they want to pay all of those extra fees. And take the time to process the application without the state requirements. Would we still permit them to? Build an ADU and then use it as a vacation rental? Or are we closing that off?
Well, I think.
The conversation.
Yeah, that, if we do allow that to happen. The state will ask us to allow another ADU. That is not subject to those fees and requirements that is maintained as long-term affordable housing. That's the problem. And then if they decide to revert that vacation rental to regular ADU, then you have another one. How do you regulate that? It becomes a challenge. So that becomes fairly problematic.
Right, so, but I don't think we want to go there.
The real, the real question is, well, the real thing is, the state's not going to allow us to use new ADUs as vacation rentals. So that we can either be silent on that in our code or put it in our code so that everyone knows that. It doesn't preclude them from using their main house as a vacation rental. It doesn't preclude them from. Using a pre-existing ADU as vacation rental. Those are the areas where we have discretion.
Director, so I'm. I, I thought what you, so. I don't know why this is so confusing. I thought that if, if a property owner came in and said. I'm going to forego all the state stuff. I'm going to go by your code of, you know, up to 1,200 square feet. I'm going to buy by the set packs. I'm going to pay the full impact fees. And I want a vacation rental. What you're saying. Is that the state says, no, we're not allowing that. And if you do allow that, you still have to allow another ADU under this state provision. Is that what I'm hearing you say?
That's what you heard and exactly.
All right, so I think we would all say.
We checked with our consultant on that, our housing consultant. And she verified that yes, the state's going to require you to put in, to allow for that property owner. To build an ADU that does comply with our code.
Got it.
So that it can be.
Sounds like we would want to say new ADUs would have to be strictly used for housing.
So as a result, we have to tell that property owner, no, you can't. Right, so we have to tell that property owner, no, you, you can't, you can't pay all the fees and build your vacation rental.
Right.
We're not going to let that.
Yep.
Because of what the state's going to make us allow you to do another unit on top of it. Okay.
What happened is some, I mean, what someone could do, particularly if you have a, you know, somebody who's retiring and they're downsizing, they could be, build their 1,200 square foot ADU. Get all the, the breaks and fees and go live in that and then rent out their main unit. So. Somebody still has that option to do, you know, rental, but we're, we're going to say as new ADUs. Need to be how, you know, how, long-term housing, not short-term rental. Right, so I think we're set on that one. Is that correct? We're good. All right.
Yeah.
So let's.
We need the code.
Yes. Yes, so let's move on to size of ADUs and JADUs. So I think with the JADUs. I don't know that we have much to say. They can do up to 500 square feet and I don't think we have any say in that, do we, Director?
That's correct.
Okay.
Code, state code pretty much prescribes that.
Okay, so up to 500. The bigger question is. Do we want, really what we're talking about tonight is between 1,000 and 1,200, do we still want to allow that? And if so, if we allow the 1,200, do we want to say from 1,001 square feet up to 1,200? Do we want to change the setbacks or have other things that we would have some discretion over? Is that the question?
That, that is the question. So you can put in design. Parameters and other things when you exceed 1,000 per fee. And you can also, yeah, put in setbacks, but you could also have limitations based on zoning, based on primary structure size, based on. Lot size, for example.
It would, go ahead, Councilmember Borbo.
And just to refresh me and maybe others, currently, you can build a 1,200 square foot ADU. But that's if you have a certain amount of land. And, and of course meet setbacks, et cetera. Is that right?
I'm not sure. I heard that. Could you repeat yourself? I'm sorry.
So I'm, I'm just asking what currently you can do, because I mean, if the state law is essentially saying. You have to allow 1,000 square foot, if it's more than one bedroom. ADU and you got to allow within four feet of the neighboring property and you cannot, can't require parking space or anything. We currently allow 1,200, but in order to do 1,200. Do we have a minimum lot size on the 1,200? And I know we. Know, we do require parking, I think, and we have our own setbacks, et cetera. Which I, I would go along with what I think the mayor's getting at, which is, hey, if you want to build over 1,000, you can do up to 1,200, but you got to meet our regular criteria. But I'm trying to ask, what is our regular criteria?
Well, regular criteria is regular setbacks, regular height, you know, lot size, minimums, et cetera. So that's something that we haven't explored with the state yet, actually, in terms of. Could we add a discretionary process if we had a larger ADU of 1,200 over 1,000? The code from the state isn't 100% clear on that. What it is clear on is you can regulate the size of ADUs. Based on certain criteria in your lot, as long as you allow 850. And as long as you allow 1,000 for ones that have more than one bedroom. That's what's clear from the state. Everything else isn't clear. So it might be a question for the state, if the council wants to go this way. That we want to allow over 1,000, but we want to have larger setbacks. And we want to have some other criteria in there. Can we do that? Or do we have to require four foot? We haven't explored that. And if the council wants to explore that. We can check with our housing representative, representative in the state to see if that's an option. But another way to go is to simply tie it to lot size, tie it to zoning, tie it to primary structure size.
Which is what we do currently.
Currently, we just have 1,200, universal.
Okay, but you, but you did say we have a lot size requirement. There's, there's certain things that it. Are you saying, no, there's no lot size requirement for 1,200? Like somebody on a. Whatever size lot could do 1,200, you're saying, as long as they can meet the setback requirements?
Correct. I mean, right now, we, well, we have the one acre minimum lot size that's still in our code.
That, okay.
It can't do any ADU, but right now, basically what, what the state is saying is that. On a site served by sewer, for example, you've got a 4,000 square foot site. And it's actually got multi-family on it. The state is saying that if you adopt an ordinance, it says you can do a 1,200 square foot ADU. You have to allow 1,200 square foot ADU on that, even if your primary residence is only 600 square feet and your lot size is only 4,000 square foot. So it's something to think about. It's a whole nother parameter. And that's why I think staff suggesting it might be a good idea. To tie ADU size to lot size or to primary dwelling size or to zoning. Because the state has expanded so broadly, the areas where you can put ADUs. It now causes us to question, should there be limitations? In that, that the state's giving us some options for limitations. I mean. So should we take, take them up on that?
Councilmember Funk followed by Councilmember Borbo.
Yeah, I'm, I'm generally interested in having maybe some, some limitations on the larger ones. To, to allow the, the thousand foot and under. The, allow the state requirements, you know, and have those four foot setbacks. But maybe to require our current setbacks for larger units. I, I think it's worth asking the state if we can do that. Because the larger the unit is, the more it creates, you know, a real experience. Changes the experience of the person on the neighboring property. And so in terms of how we're, you know, we have those impacts, if we had a little more setback. Required for those bigger units, that might make. That might make more sense. I don't want to, I'm reluctant to go into something that, that. That references the size of the primary dwelling relative to the ADU. I'm, I think the lot size is a better parameter. And that's because I don't think we should penalize people who either have older homes that are modest in size. And want to be able to do something new on the property. And maybe move into there themselves and let their kids have the main house. You know, that kind of thing, or to have people who want to build, you know, a new tiny home or small home. Don't have that, that choice, penalize them in terms of their flexibility of doing other things with the rest of the property.
Councilmember Borbo.
Yeah, I was, I agree with what Councilmember Funk said, but I was a little confused, Phil. He said we can tie it to lot size, but essentially the state law is saying, no, you can't tie it to lots. By, you've got to allow. 850 or 1,000 square foot. Accessory dwelling units with a four-foot setback. So I'm looking.
Talking over 1,000 square feet is what we're talking about. So really, it's the 1,000 to 1,200.
Right, so our discretion is if, if we allow over 1,000 square foot, I'm sorry, I'm having a little delay here, so I'm interrupting you. If, if we, you know, we currently allow 1,200 on a minimum lot size with setbacks. From my perspective, and I think this is what Councilmember Funk was getting at, I want to continue to allow that. I mean, I don't want to tell somebody who's got. You know, five acres out on the west side that. Because the state changed the law to allow ADUs everywhere, you can only have 1,000 square feet. Um, you know. Now, but for, if you want to go over 1,000, you want to go to 1,200, then you should meet, you know, these other things like lot size and setbacks, et cetera. And I agree with Councilmember Funk, there's no reason to tie it to the size of the primary because. Even out on these large lots, you might have an older home that's only 1,500 square feet or something and you don't want to. Penalize somebody, you know, for having, for somebody built a smaller home 40 years ago. So.
So I think, I think what we're saying, Phil, is you need to check with the consultant and with the state. That if we want to allow that extra two, up to that extra 200 square feet. Only if, you know, you have the setbacks and you have the minimum lot size and all of that. And if they say, yes, you can do that, then we want to move ahead with that. If they say, nope, if you allow 1,200, you allow it everywhere, then we're not hot on that idea.
Got it. That sounds good. But we do know today is that we, we may be restricted on requiring. Additional setbacks for a larger ADU. We know the state can. Allow us to restrict ADU size based on a tiny lot. Let's say someone has a 5,000 square foot lot and they want a 1,200 square foot ADU. We can't say, no, your lot's too small. We want to set it at a one acre minimum. If you want to go over 1,000 square feet, we can do that. We know that today. That's written into state code. What we don't know is a setback scenario. We can explore that if council desires.
Yeah, please do. So we're talking lot size plus setbacks. All right. Do you have sufficient direction on that?
Yes.
Wonderful. All right, five, parking requirements. It, I mean, there's not a lot of discretion there.
There's not, we, we cannot require more than one parking space per ADU. And we can't require replacement parking if they choose to build an ADU in a garage.
JADU, correct. So what do you need from us?
Don't believe we need anything on parking.
I have one question on parking.
Good thing.
Okay, can we retain the recurrent safety requirement? That if, that's number six on page 48, if a lot takes access from a collector or arterial street. That parking for second units must be designed so that the vehicles go, drive out forward instead of backing into. The collector or arterial street.
Yes, like all the criteria that's written into the state code. Everything is tied to health and safety standards. So if we make findings that a certain criteria is needed to protect public health and safety. We can feasibly assume that that is an adoptable criteria. So we can maintain that.
I'd like to do that.
And I think that is automatically what you will be doing, correct, Director? Anything, anything within here that relates to health and safety. You don't even need direction from us. I mean, we can provide. you don't even need direction from us. I mean, we can provide it, because we do. But bottom line is, that is what you're going to be doing.
We're going to build those assumptions into our new code.
Okay, great.
Uh, the next thing was the application review period. I think even just in our comments, you've got a lot of feedback in terms of, you know, making it as, as easy and simple as possible, however that might look. Uh, is there any additional comments that need to be made on this subject? Councilmember Funk.
Just one, a question. Uh, do you need anything else from us in terms of, of, of streamlining or simplification in order to make it possible for you to meet that criteria regularly?
No, I think what I heard from the council is we do want to have a provision to have a document available to counter that an applicant can sign, and the, and the staff can sign that acknowledges that they're willing to accept a longer review time.
Okay. Good enough.
Mayor, I wanted, I wanted to understand something on that. You know, we talked about in the concept of, I submit my plans, you, you, you know, thirty days or so, maybe a little more. You give me my plans back with corrections, and now I may not be able to get them back into you by this sixty day deadline, um, you know, so maybe I agree upfront to waive that. What if I, though, take those, you know, take your corrections, wait till day fifty-nine, come in and go, okay, here's my corrected set of plans, you have to give me my permit by tomorrow. Um, does it create a situation like that?
It doesn't say we have to give them a permit. It says we have to approve or deny.
Right.
So, we would have to deny at that point.
Okay, that's
That's not a logical thing. We don't want to have to do that. So we'd say, you need to sign this, or we're going to deny.
They couldn't force you into, gotcha. They would force you into approval or denial, and if you don't have time to review the plans, you'd have to deny it. Okay, got it. Thanks.
And if I may, thanks, Charles, because that actually clears up where I was, you know, getting an applicant to sign this waiver for an extended amount of time, couldn't figure out how you were going to do that, but now it makes sense that we're going to deny your project or sign it, so that makes sense. And I think that, I'd like to see a clock on the time that we're actually holding the plans. But if this is going to work, then I'm okay with that, too.
You have direction? Enough from us, Director?
Yes.
Um, the next is, uh, the conversation of junior ADUs, and, and really what I'm seeing, the recommendation is the limit to five hundred square feet, which is what the state code says. So that's what we need to change, that it's located on owner occupied property. It's within the footprint. Um, and then the code should further refine by the definition to describe an attached garage as one that is attached to the primary residence along at least one complete wall. Um, so that was the recommendation. Um, I don't think I heard anything from any of us that want, would want to do something different. Is there additional direction or anything that you would need?
Yeah.
Okay, so just as recommended. Okay, now we're looking, are we good on that? Looking at all my squares, all right. Let's see, um, building setbacks, again, I mean, we don't, we don't have any say in that. It's the sixteen foot height, the four foot, but if it goes to twenty-five feet, we can retain our setbacks that we currently have.
That's correct. The only thing needs to happen there is we do need to adjust our code to clearly describe the street frontage yard on a corner lot. Otherwise, state code is going to force us to put a four foot setback along the street, which is not a good design idea. So we need to clarify that a street yard on a corner lot is still a front yard on the street side.
Yes.
Yeah, we'll, we'll clarify the code. It's, so just want to make sure council understands that.
I think we do, and we're good with that. Yes. All right, I'm seeing the nods. Excellent. All right, so now we are on to, let's see. Trying to go through my, okay, so C C and R provisions, the, so we've got, I, I, and I'm kind of going off of page fifty-four, uh, we're on to number nine. Like numbers ten, eleven, and twelve, you don't need anything from us on. It sounds like nine and thirteen are kind of the same thing. Really, the final thing we're talking about that you need direction on is the C C and R provisions, the prohibiting ADUs within the multifamily. So really, uh, th- this is, this is a challenging one, because from, um, Mr. Hushing Klein, what he was talking about is his P, the PD that he's under is that it is more than just his property, or his, not his property, but his certain development. Um, is the sense I got that it covers other developments, and so changing that PD could be a bigger issue. Um, could you speak to the concern that he brought up as we get into this?
PD seven is one of the more common plan developments. It's used as a stock plan development code in multiple properties in Atascadero, multiple developments in Atascadero. So if PD seven has changed itself, and it's changed universally for all these other properties in the city, so that's kind of problematic. Um, this is something, when it comes down to a P, C C and R's, multifamily zoning, we need a little bit more legal help on this. Uh, we need a little more H C D direction and direction from our housing consultant on this before we can definitively say exactly what latitude we have on it. What we do know is that C C and R's are out for single family zone properties, C C and R's are in on multifamily zone properties. But in terms of whether we can have a discretionary action and require the PD to be amended to accommodate ADUs, it's still a little bit of a gray area, and something that needs refinement before we can bring that topic back to you.
Like you said, it was that his HOA is fine with it, that he has approval, so there's no C C and R issue. It sounds like the only issue has to do with the, the PD and the underlying multifamily zoning in his particular property. So what you're saying is, you know, the direction tonight really is, let's get more information from our legal team in terms of, you know, what would need to happen to accommodate, uh, any of these property owners.
That's right.
Okay.
It could, because it seems like, it seems like what, what we're, the, the, the purpose of having that restriction in the plan development is to uh, manage neighborhood impacts. And if you've got a PD that is in bits and pieces all over the city, we're not managing neighborhood impacts. Um, that, that's has to be happening at a, at a micro level. So if there's a way, if there's an appropriate way to, and legal way to do that, to allow a little more flexibility if the actual neighborhood as represented by an HOA or, you know, whatever process, um, is fine with this. And then they would seem reasonable for us to find a way to, um, allow that. Um, otherwise, um, then we can, in, in geographically coherent PDs, then the PD itself is that, forms that pur- purpose and defends the interests of the neighborhood in balance with the interest of the property owner.
I wonder, are there areas within, uh, any of the PDs where they might have an HOA and C C and R's, but they don't speak to the ADU issue because that wasn't allowed under the plan development? So they were silent on something that didn't pertain to that particular development, and now if we remove that from the PD and say it's up to the localized areas, but then they could be scrambling, saying, wait, we don't have a mechanism to deal with that, and everybody rushes in and does something, or half the people do, and the other half the people are, you know, upset that the neighborhood has completely changed, and now their internal roads are impacted, so, um, so I'm thinking like, th- that's just more information that would be needed.
The state threw us a challenge on this one.
Yeah, just this one.
Yeah.
It happens.
So really what you're saying is more, um, more legal review to look into this and see what, um, what is possible. Are there any other comments or questions from, uh, council in any further direction that you might need, Director? Looks like we're going in the right direction. Okay. So if I, do you want me, actually, do you want, how about you, uh, summarize what you think the direction is, so we can make sure that we're good?
That sounds great. I think that's always a question later on when we're developing this code. What did they really say? I could always listen to the tape again, but that takes a while. So.
So let's you do it, and I'm going to compare, and we'll make sure we're good.
All right, let's go on to the, I'm just going to go on to the big, the bigger topic, starting with the septic systems and discussion. We, uh, conclude, or the council concluded that as a standard, we are going to have a one acre minimum. But that, um, we will bring back, um, additional analysis and, um, gosh, damn, I'm forgetting. I write the note down on that one.
What we had really said is that if there is an exception that can be easily identified
That's right.
and simply crafted, then, you know, like, oh, hey, any, any lot that's surrounded by five acre parcels, you know, a- and, and I'm super simplified that, that's not it, but you get what we're saying. So if you say, it's really obvious that this area, that will work, and you can craft that, great, but if it becomes this one Z, two Z picking, and it's super complicated, and we're going to throw everyone off, then we don't want to do that.
Correct. Yeah, I do actually have that note written down about looking at the, the other areas around it. So we'll come back with that. One acre minimum is a baseline. The, um, second topic, uh, fire hazard zones, we still are going to come back to you with some additional analysis from our fire chief, and to talk about the areas that, uh, are limited with road access in our very high fire zones and our wild and urban interface to dictate what areas may not be suitable for ADUs and additional density. On vacation rentals, we are going to go with the state and prohibiting vacation rentals in newly constructed ADUs. But in terms of existing ADUs, we're going to leave that alone.
Uh, I think what we said in terms of existing ADUs that are long-term rentals, we will approve a conversion to short-term rental, that they would have to be subject to state changes. So if the state came along and said, oh, well, no, now you have to conduct, you know, build another one, that's, you have to allow another one, they would sign off and say, no, we realize it's short-term rental unless the state comes in, and then they would have to convert back to long-term rental.
So the question is, would we actually put that into our code language in terms of that? And that's where I was thinking, where I said that, would we leave it alone, or we actually?
It would probably need to be within whatever we have with regards to short-term rentals. So when someone comes in to apply for a short-term rental, it would need to be very clear that if you're doing that, know that the state could come back and say, uh, 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 we don't like that, and you're going to have to convert back to a long-term rental. We're not going to bear, your neighborhood's not going to bear the brunt of another ADU on your property.
And so one way to, to potentially handle that is put it into an agreement form we already have for their business license and their trans. Thanks for approving that.
Yeah.
Um, not actually having the code, but it's part of their provision for getting a license for an ADU.
Yes.
And that would only apply, keep in mind, to ADUs built prior to January one, twenty twenty.
Yes, yes.
Okay, on to the size, um, the discussion of size. We're going to bring back some additional information on that. Um, in terms of, the question that we have primarily for that on our consultant is, if we do allow ADUs over a thousand square feet, can we prescribe additional setbacks?
Right.
And lot size minimum.
And lot size minimums. We know we can do lot size. Um, we can tie it to lot size. The code says that, but the key, the key question that we don't know the answer to is setbacks.
Setbacks, okay.
And then the other issues are all already self-prescribed. We do have more information to bring back to you on plan developments.
Yep. I think you got it. All right. Good job, everyone. That was great. We went through that. We went through that pretty smoothly. Lot of, lot of septic talk, but it's an important topic. I think we got through this nicely. We all did a lot of homework ahead of time, so, uh, and thank you all members of the public for being here. That was great. Okay, so now we are on to, um, our management report C two, which is labor agreements and salary schedules for fiscal years. Three of them, twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-three, twenty-four. And, um, is this our city, this is our, um, community, community services director? No. Our administrative services director, Ms. Jerry Rangel.
Yes, thank you very much, council, mayor and council. Um, let me go ahead and get the screen shared with you. Can you see my screen now?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. I'm very excited tonight to bring this to you, the labor agreements and salary schedules. We've been working really hard and really collaboratively, and, um, we are excited to move forward with this thing. All right. So tonight we are going to be looking at the labor agreements with all of the labor unions, the units. We're going to be amending the city council, city, excuse me, city manager's contract, and approving salary schedules for fiscal years twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-three, twenty-four. Uh, currently, the city has a hundred and thirty-seven full-time budgeted positions. And there are five labor groups, fire, S E I U, police, mid-management, and management and confidential. The city did an extensive salary survey as of February first, two thousand twenty-one, and I can comfortably say that the city of Atascadero is the lowest paying city in the entire county. For most employee positions, Atascadero paid less than any other of the slow, um, cities. Positions like police officer, nine-one-one dispatcher, maintenance workers, planners, inspectors, technology positions, finance directors, and the city manager were all lower. While paying the lowest in the county may seem like a good thing, it has a huge impact on the city's ability to attract and retain qualified professional employees. While COVID has, has led to labor shortages in many areas, the city's ability to retain and attract employees has been ongoing for some time now. Currently, the city has eighteen vacant positions, after the three that we just hired yesterday. What are the impacts of these vacancies and employee turnover? There's a lot. So we have lower service levels for the community. Vacancies mean fewer people on duty to serve the public, fewer police officers on duty to respond to emergencies, more overflowing trash cans, restrooms that need cleaning, potholes, debris in the street, and fewer maintenance workers to clear down trees, blocked roads, and respond to emergencies. Longer processing times for permits and plans, fines and penalties for not completing financial reports on time, or delays in payments and processing of finances. More inexperienced personnel. We have been able to hire some people with very incredible talent and a lot of potential, but they are often inexperienced. Inexperienced personnel have multiple impacts on the city. Training, for one. It often takes more employee time to train someone than to do it yourself. Adding an inexperienced person to the staff is often good in the long run, well, if you can keep that person that you trained. But effectively, it takes two people out of productive work. The person that you're training and the person that's doing the training. We have more liability, more errors, and we're less efficient. Efficiencies. Qualified professionals with institutional knowledge can get a lot done because they know the job. Additional costs. Turnover adds costs. Recruitment, training, overtime, let alone the cost to the public from delays and inadequate staffing. Employee burnout. We've been short-staffed due to vacancies that causes employee burnout as employees try to cover job duties or shifts of missing people. Public conversations about the challenges related to employee attraction and retention started a few years ago. With the Talk on the Block series, public outreach sessions, the council discussions considering placing a tax measure on the ballot, and of course, the extensive D twenty public outreach sessions, where the community members that attended the D twenty study sessions consistently brought up staffing as an area that needed to be addressed. When asked what makes Atascadero better, staffing was one of the top answers. As it was for what urgent needs this city should address and what success would look like. Based on the input from the ten meetings, along with other input in the last few years, at their strategic planning session in February, council made staffing a key focus area. It included focusing on hiring, growing, and retaining our employees, and addressing salaries, not just for police employees, which have been a particular challenge in many years, but for all employees. All that was, all that was the basis and the backdrop for the labor negotiations. All four of the unions, plus the management and confidential resolution expired June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. While there have been, uh, community-wide discussions about addressing salaries for the last few years, the city didn't begin meeting with the unions until March of twenty twenty-one. And the city council began meeting in closed sessions to discuss labor, pardon, labor negotiations. The focus of the labor negotiations was really to address those positions where the city was paying considerably less than the current market rate for those positions, and thus was having a hard time both retaining and attracting employees. Looking to be fiscally conservative with taxpayer dollars and really as a part of that, ensuring that the city invested each tax dollar wisely. It was clear that the city needed to invest in competitive salaries. We wouldn't ever be the highest-paying city, but we'd need to be making adjustments to come closer to the average pay for the positions in order to have quality employees to serve the community. With that frame, framework, proposals have been agreed upon for all of the five labor units. The proposed MOUs are designed to adjust salaries to become more competitive with adjacent jurisdictions in order to retain and attract employees. For all the employees except those in the police unions, all of the agreements were similar. The next few slides are applicable to all of the employees except those in the police unit, which I will get to in just a few minutes. The cost of living adjustment for the first year, um, twenty-one, twenty-two is five percent, twenty-two, twenty-three is four percent, and twenty-three, twenty-four is three point five percent. The agreements include an annual city contribution to the employee's deferred compensation account in recognition of longevity and sticking with the city. For all employees that have been here for ten years or more, the city will annually deposit fifty dollars per full year of service into the employee's deferred comp account. In fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, that fifty dollars will go up to a hundred dollars per year annually. The city contribution occurs once per year in September. In an attempt to be more attractive to potential employees and in order to retain employees, the labor agreements include additional salary adjustments to positions to get them closer to the county average. In addition to the COLA and the deferred comp, additional adjustments were made to specific positions based on the calculations of how much the city paid for the positions when compared with the average wage, wage paid by the other seven or the seven cities in the county. The salary survey was done as of February first, twenty twenty-one, for all positions in the county. We calculated the average mean salary for the seven cities in the county. For each position, calculated how far that percentage it was under the county salary and then proposed salary adjustments based on how far it was under the average. The positions were anywhere from zero to twenty-five percent below average for the comparable positions in the other or within the county. The additional adjustments range anywhere from zero to ten percent in two point five percent increments. The amount of the adjustments for each position was based solely on the percent under the county average. Fire had a few other provisions in their MOU. We, um, increased the vacation for long-term employees just so it was consistent with the other groups and removed the reduction of specialty pay for hazard, um, the hazmat team from two percent down to one percent. And then also added a few more other specialty assignments that will also receive the one percent specialty pay. I did want to bring your attention to, there is, um, an error on page one sixty-seven of your agenda. Item six point six E should read that there is a maximum of eight employees assigned to the technical rescue team, the TRT, um, not the four as shown in your agenda packet. And then also the life insurance was increased to fifty thousand, um, as with the other units. The city manager. Well, the city manager has also the lowest salary in the county. Some of the benefits in the current city manager contract tended to exceed some of the other city managers in the county. The city manager's contract is being adjusted to be more consistent with those other agencies. As such, the management resolution includes giving the city manager the same COLA cost of living increase as the other employees, which, as you probably remember, is five percent in the first year, four percent in the second year, and three point five in the third year. It also includes a salary adjustment of five percent in year one under section, um, B, under salaries. The city manager's available benefits will be reduced by about seventeen thousand dollars a year. And a portion of this will be put into salary, increasing the city manager's salary by eleven thousand six hundred forty a year to range M sixty-nine step E on the salary schedule. This salary is perishable, which the deferred compensation was not. So that does add another about one thousand nine hundred dollars, um, in annual purse costs for the swap of the benefits from, um, the deferred comp to the salary. The net effect of this whole exchange right here is a potential reduction in cost to the city of about three thousand five hundred dollars per year. The salary, salary schedules and benefits paid in the form of compensation of the city manager, department heads, and deputy city managers can be found in the agenda on pages one oh, one ninety-three through two oh seven. The twenty-one, twenty-two salary schedule is on page one ninety-four of your agenda. Police. Attraction of police officers and dispatchers nationwide has been a challenge for many years. Attracting quality applicants to these tough positions has been a challenge, not just for Atascadero, but for every police force nationwide. Here in Atascadero, due to our low comparative wages, this nationwide shortage is compounded even further as quality employees that we are able to attract are eventually lured away by significantly higher-paying neighboring jurisdictions. And this was particularly highlighted in the D twenty sessions as the community voiced concerns over police retention. As such, police employees were offered a slightly better agreement. The cost of living adjustments are higher than all of the other employee groups in years two and three. Police employees will receive the same cost of living in year one, five percent. But in years two and three, police will also receive another five percent, a little bit higher than the other units. Also slightly better than the other employees, police employees will receive additional salary adjustments ranging from two point five percent to twelve point five percent based on the position and the wages paid by neighboring jurisdictions. Similar to the other employees, police employees will also receive the deferred comp contribution for longevity. For all employees that have been here for ten years or more, the city will annually deposit fifty dollars per year of service into their deferred comp account. And then in fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, that will go up to a hundred dollars annually, and this would occur in September. Police had a few other provisions, like matching fifty-fifty reimbursement for a gym up to six hundred dollars per year. City provided counseling services for per year and housing reimbursements for recruits, which would maximum that six hundred dollars per month. And with that, um, I did want to add one other correction, um, that we did find after printing on, um, the, um, page, um, one ninety-three of your agenda package in the last sentence where it reads, and the adjustments per C of five percent should read, and the adjustments per B of five percent. So there are two, um, adjustments that we have. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Director Rangel. Very thorough report. Uh, and I want to thank, um, I want to thank you, our city manager, all of our bargaining units, really all of our employees for coming together. This is a lot of work to do. And that we were able to come together in, in bringing this agreement and to have it over a three-year period that just gives some um, stability to this process, I think is really good. But, uh, Jerry, you and your team have done a tremendous job. And, uh, we've had a lot of closed sessions on this and, and to my council members, we've been here eleven o'clock and, and later going through this. So I really want to thank our entire team for coming together and something that i- is very important. And Jerry, you did such a thorough report because this really did come out of, um, you know, starting with Talk on the Block, the D twenty meetings and, and the conversations with the public and, and that it was important for us to, as you said, to be able to attract and retain qualified employees at all levels, particularly in our police department, but really throughout the organization, because that ends up making us more efficient and in using our taxpayer dollars much more wisely. So, um, good job on all of this. Uh, so we have really gone through all of this thoroughly. So there may be a handful of questions and I'll, I'll look to my council. And if there's not, we'll open that up to public comment, but I'll look first to council if there's any questions for our director. Uh, council member Funk.
Just briefly, um, and thank you for that, that very articulate, uh, report and for all your work. Um, and I do want to thank our employees also for hanging in there with our city through years where they know that they are being underpaid relative to their colleagues in other cities in similar positions, but they have hung in there with us to help create this city. And we're glad that we're able to, um, to honor that tonight. Uh, the housing allowance for new police officers, uh, is that while they're going to the police academy and being off-site? Or is that something else?
Yes, that is, right.
Okay. And what were the three positions we hired yesterday?
I believe two of them were in public works and I can't recall the other one. Maybe the city manager can help me out with that one.
Uh, we had one of our two maintenance workers hired yesterday and, uh, one police recruit that will be going to the academy and, uh, here in a short bit, and a police dispatcher. So, yay. Free down, eighteen to go.
That's excellent news. So, uh, tell our folks reinforcements are coming. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? And then I will go ahead and open up to public comment. If you're in the webinar and you would like to raise your hand for public comment, please do. Or if you're on the phone, simply press star nine. Any public comment on this item? I'm seeing no one, so going once, going twice. And all right, we'll close public comment and bring that back to council for a motion.
I think that we adopt that recommendation.
Including the two corrections?
That is correct. Those minor corrections and thanks, Jerry.
All right, I see a motion by Mayor Protem Newsom. And do we have a second?
Second.
Council member Funk is the second. Uh, roll call, please.
Council member Funk?
Yes.
Council member Borbo?
Yes.
Council member Daris?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Newsom?
Yes.
Mayor Moreno?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes.
Thank you. All right, we are now on to council announcements and committee reports, and I will go through our. Just as I see everybody on the screen, I'll start with council member Borbo.
Um, well, the idea of May has not met since our last meeting. I, I've been involved with a whole bunch of phone calls and other things involving it because there's a lot of things going on. Um, as I mentioned last time, of course, the county is withdrawing and that will impact, uh, some technical language in the joint powers agreement as well as probably necessitate, uh, you know, a discussion with all the jurisdictions about any other changes they'd like to see in the JPA. And, um, we will be looking at, um, a recalculation of the, uh, rates needed to support implementation of thirteen eighty-three. And, uh, in light, also taking into consideration the county's departure. And that'll be coming forth to all of the jurisdictions at some point so they can use it in a, in their two eighteen process, uh, you know, with their, with their haulers and with their ratepayers. And I want to thank you, Mayor, that when, um, Mr. Osland, uh, kind of posed the question to me regarding something that you properly put it to, uh, Laura Christensen, who handles thirteen eighty-three implementation for our city.
Yes. Council member Funk?
Uh, yes, um, on Thursday, I'll be, uh, having the first meeting with the, if, through the homeless services oversight council, which I chair for the county, the first meeting of the steering committee that's working on a zero-to-ten-year plan to address homelessness, uh, countywide. And it has, uh, people with a variety of backgrounds and, and from across the city. We will be in regular touch with many groups of people in the development of this plan, but we're also going to have to move very quickly, uh, because the needs, uh, are urgent and the opportunities are, are ripe right now for funding. Um, and then, uh, council member Daris and I and city manager Rosal Rickard, uh, spent the better part of last week, um, Tuesday night through Friday, through the League of California Cities Annual Conference, attending sessions and, and learning and connecting with, uh, with vendors and colleagues, uh, to better serve our city.
You. Council member Daris.
Yes, thank you. Yes, as council member Funk just said, I was, uh, last week at Sacramento for that conference. That was, uh, my first time for that conference and was very good, got a lot of, uh, good information, some good discussion on, on things that will affect us. Um, the air pollution control district board met last week while I was in Sacramento, so I wasn't able to attend that. Uh, so I'll just have to go over the minutes and, and get up to speed on that. Uh, and coming up in, I'm looking for my calendar, in a couple of weeks, uh, October eleventh, tenth, eleventh, seventh, somewhere around there. First week, I'll be in San Diego for California Joint Powers Insurance Authority, uh, conference down there. So, um, that's going to be a few days. I, I have, I'm down there as a delegate vote voter for them, for us on that. Uh, I'm not going to attend the entire conference since I got to go all the way down there. So, that's what I got. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mayor Protem Newsom?
I have nothing to report.
Thank you. Uh, you know, I want to say that there is so much that we do that is beyond these meetings. And I really, it, it, it comes to light particularly right now when council members Funk and Daris and our city manager were, you know, off at the league and it's great to go to those things because it keeps you, um, connected to the things that are happening. You're connecting with other people within our region. Uh, and, and, and they're so valuable, but they also take you away. I mean, both of you have, you know, businesses, jobs, works, work that you do. Uh, our city manager, of course, us ends up making up all of her time by, you know, working into the night. So appreciate what you're doing and, and even council member Daris, um, coming up with CJPIA. So, you know, sometimes we might be at a county meeting that takes five hours out of our day and other times where it's something that takes three days out of a week. And so I just want to appreciate all of you right now for what you put into this, uh, and for a community. I did have, um, did you have more on your report, council member Funk?
Yeah, I neglected to mention that, um, that next week on Wednesday will be a meeting of the Atascadero uh, groundwater base, groundwater sustainability agency for the Atascadero basin. And since we spent a lot of time talking about water quality issues today and people have had concerns about how that basin's being managed, I wanted to make sure to mention it.
Yeah. Uh, we had our, uh, countywide mayor's meeting and, uh, Dan Turner from the Fire Safe Council, um, uh, presented and what I was really excited to hear about out of that, they've been getting a lot of grant funding and they, we will be implementing Zone Haven countywide. So, you know, kudos to, uh, Chief Ryson and our, our fire department and, and really bringing that together and, you know, taking that show on the road and to show how valuable this could be. So very excited that that will be happening. Um, it seems like once we hit early November, it'll be about a six to eight month process for them to get on board. So very glad that's happening. Reach last week, uh, we had a, we had our, our bi-annual or sorry, bi-monthly meeting. They also had their investor, uh, sort of event that they have, uh, well, this is the first year, once a year, they've been, you know, out of the two and a half years they've been in existence, eight, eighteen months of it have been COVID. So it was very, to see what they've really been able to pull together in terms of the private investment, really pulling together a regional group and to bring EVC under that umbrella. and to be able to take the actions that they are in the amount of time that they have with the constraints of COVID. It was really, it's really heartening to see that. Director Dunsmore and Lorelei from our community development department were also there. One of the exciting things that they're continuing that the EVC was doing is broadband because I think, and we've all talked about this, it's so important to look at it regionally, that not just all the little cities are doing our own thing. And so Reach is really looking at this regionally, and then how do we each of the cities plug into that? Because there's so much funding right now, and we need to know, we need to know how to be competitive and go after that. So really glad to see that moving forward. Next week, SLOCOG, RTA, et cetera, et cetera. And I will just say Echo had its long walk home. Councilmember Funk and Daris and I were there, and I think they raised over forty thousand dollars, all said. So we apparently walked by while Charles was painting the downtown senior center. And there was also a Volvo show going on out there. So a lot going on on that Saturday.
We saw you over on the steps, City Hall.
Yeah, it was a good, good day. All right. And with that, I will see, are there any individual determinations or actions? Councilmember Funk? Are muted?
That'll help. The, in light of, of the both the, the Echo Lock, Walk Home, and then noting that this is Echo's twentieth anniversary this year. We had a request come through. I'm wondering if the, if the council would be willing to support in the mayor honor to issue a proclamation to be presented on Thursday at the Big Mixer where we're recognizing the queen and king of Colony Days. Because our king and queen that the Colonies Committee Days has selected are founders of Echo. And this is Echo's twentieth year to proclaim September thirtieth, two thousand twenty one as El Camino Homeless Organization Day in Atascadero. If that's something the council members would be willing to go for. And we have texts that we can work with for the staff to execute.
I knew we were doing a proclamation. We'd already planned on that. I thought it was with regards to the king and queen. So are we doing, and, and we don't need to hash this out right now. I think whatever we work out is fine. So we've kind of got something in the works. If we do two of them, I think our council generally agree we'd be fine with that. So yeah, we will, we will work out whether it's one or two or how we do that. All right, anything else? Anything? All right. Well, very good. We are meeting adjourned. We'll see you back here in two weeks. Good night, all.
Good night.
Good night, everybody.